Good evening. Good evening and welcome to this, the February 10th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting into order. Let the roll call show that all members of the city council are present and accounted for. Tonight, we have a special treat. Tonight, we have the Pledge of Allegiance is going to be presented by the Del Arroyo 4-H Group with Miranda Monroe. So I'd ask for the young ladies to come forward and the rest of the young gentlemen and ladies to come up. And you can all lead us, ladies and gentlemen, in the Pledge of Allegiance. Well done. Good job, boys and girls. Okay, with that, we have the question for the city attorney. Was there any reportable action taken in the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, no, there was not.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We now have an update from our poet laureate, Cynthia Patton. Cynthia Patton? Okay, well, we will hold off and when she gets here, we will come back to that. Moving on to the citizens forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action on something brought up during the citizens forum. I have half a dozen cards here. I asked the -- oh, there she is. You want to take -- go ahead, catch your breath.
Am I -- are we ready for me?
Yeah, we are ready. All right, so here we have an update from our poet laureate, Cynthia Patton.
Sorry I'm late. Didn't mean to cut it this close. I actually went to the new building.
I'm sorry. We'll let you know.
Because I forgot to ask and I realized on the way over, there was a couple of people wandering around, so I escorted them here.
We've never been closer.
You know, we all assumed after, what, six months or so?
We'll get there.
We'd be out of the double Y.
It's going to be perfect.
Okay.
Poet Laureate.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Cynthia Patton and I'm here tonight to deliver my annual poet laureate report. Let's see. I am now in my second two-year term as poet laureate. I began on June 26, 2017, and will continue through summer of 2021. Since I was installed as poet laureate, I have written 29 poems for civic events and public art installations, with an additional poem in the works, hosted 44 open mics at Swirl, Ravenswood, the library, the Alameda County Fair, and even Carnegie Park, coordinated and hosted eight Poetry at Ravenswood events with some phenomenal poets, including many poets of color, curated and performed three Cowboy Poetry events at Hagaman Ranch with the help of one spectacular volunteer, Nathan McKenna, served twice as poetry judge at the Alameda County Fair, hosted Poetry Day at the fair twice, which includes an open mic and a free poetry workshop, held three Poetry in a Test Tube Science Poetry Contest, the third one just launched this week, hosted a Poetry Corner at the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District Science Odyssey Expo last year, and will do it again later this week on Thursday night, Junction Avenue, coordinated 16 Teen Poet of the Month contests, 18 by the end of the school year, held two award ceremonies and readings for the Poetry in a Test Tube Science Poetry Contest with a similar event planned for this spring, held an award ceremony and reading for the Teen Poet of the Month program, and then last year switched to award certificates, which the students enjoyed far more than the public reading, which apparently was deemed as torture, recruited poets and artists for the Worth a Thousand Words exhibit, which was held at the Bankhead Theater Lobby from October 30th through January 6th of this year. I also curated a related exhibit that displayed all of the Teen Poet of the Month winners and honorable mentions for the 2018-2019 academic school year. I led a poetry walk at the opening and closing receptions for the Worth a Thousand Words exhibit, participated in the Poets Laureate on Social Justice Tour this past fall, giving readings throughout Northern California focused on social justice issues, gave four readings at the Livermore Civic Center Library, including autism awareness and social justice events, attended six additional literary events at the library, gave more than 20 poetry readings in Livermore and throughout the Greater Bay Area this past year alone, prepared and distributed a monthly literary arts newsletter, traveled to Southern California to attend the historic Gathering of Poets Laureate of California in October 2018, and also attended the Gathering of Bay Area Poets Laureate at the Milbury Library this past September, attended the statewide Creativity for Change Symposium hosted by California Poets in the Schools in August of 2019, and represented Livermore at literary events throughout the Bay Area. Upcoming events include the Science Poetry Contest, the deadline is Wednesday, March 4th of this year, an award ceremony and reading for the Science Poetry Contest tentatively scheduled for Sunday, March 22nd at 2:00 p.m. at the Civic Center Library. The public is welcome. Hopefully Mayor Marchand and I will host. More Teen Poet of the Month contests. I will be working with the Los Pacitas College on the first Livermore Literary Arts Festival, scheduled for May 9th. Cowboy Poetry at Hagaman Ranch this June, another Poetry Day at the fair with an open mic and free writing workshop, which is scheduled for July 5th. Let's see, the Ravenswood Poetry Series will be moving downtown. Look for a rebranded event in April to celebrate National Poetry Month. And then, of course, the Whistlestop Writers Open Mic, Just Shive at 6:00 the Year, happens on the 4th Wednesday of every month at Swirl on the Square. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
With all that, is the Livermore Limericks collection coming soon from your desk? Oh, just making it up.
I know.
I just want to say, wow, that's an amazing list, and I love the fact that poetry is being -- coming to all of us in so many venues. Thank you.
The Ekfrasis collaboration at the Bankhead was really a remarkable event. That was great.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, we got a lot of great feedback on that.
The poetry and the artwork that did along with it was great.
Yeah, and the Bankhead is actually considering, I think, or maybe even planning, doing that again, or making that like an annual event in November and December, every holiday season. So hopefully, we'll be doing that again.
Terrific.
And I'm starting to get invited now to all kinds of, you know, just last month, I read at the -- to open the Wild and Scenic Film Festival. I'm going to be reading at the Rally for Love, which is not called, I think it's now called the Festival of Love in April.
The Kites, right around the corner here. They did the poetry for the Kites.
And I'm doing a lot of things. Yeah, and it's interesting, because the more poet laureates I meet from other places, a lot of cities do not use their poet laureates, the way Livermore does, to do, you know, art installations and civic events. They're kind of like, well, what do you write? I'm like, that's a huge part of my job. Like, you guys don't do that. So anyway, I think that's a great, you know, a great feature of our program, so.
Excellent. We'll keep the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're back to the citizens forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action. And I ask that you keep your comments two, three minutes or less. And the first speaker that we have is Stella Wetig-Razzo. Second is Caleb, and third is Greg Scott. Stella Wetig-Razzo? Oh, you can speak at the -- there's a podium right there. Can you, can you reach the microphone?
Not really.
Oh, hang on a second. We've got, we've got a scientist behind you there.
I'll just hold it. My name is Stella Wetig-Razzo. I'm a proud member of 4-H. I want to talk to you about our city parks. During this past soccer season, which is August to November, my soccer team has had a really bad experience at the park we were playing at. The grass was rarely mowed and became very long and difficult to practice on. The grass needs to be kept short and to be safe. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Don't worry, that's not your fault. Thank you very much. Then we have Caleb, Greg Scott, Neil Herrick.
I might have to help him up. Okay, go ahead. Hi, I'm Caleb.
Hi, I'm Caleb.
There you go.
And I'm in 4-H.
Okay, so say, say what you like about it. And how old are you?
Six.
Six years old. First time doing this.
Say what you like about being 4-H.
I could be in 4-H because I put compost in the compost bin and we put water in there and the worms go in the compost bin.
That's one thing you did, you learned how to compost. What else did you learn?
So I did the --
Aggro robotics.
Aggro robotics.
Teaching drones how to run a small farm. Everyone should check out 4-H.
Well, great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have Greg Scott, Neil Herrick, Mary Ann Brent.
Good evening, Livermore City Council, City of Livermore staff, audience members in these chambers, video audience and likely video audience members, Alameda County Supervisor, District 1 candidates, Fremont City Councilman Vinnie Bacon and Dublin City Councilwoman Melissa Hernandez. I am Greg Scott and I speak on homelessness in Livermore, where we have more than 200 unsheltered homeless, homelessness in the Tri-Vallies, which includes the city of Pleasanton and Alameda County Supervisor, District 4, and the cities of Livermore and Dublin and Alameda County Supervisor, District 1, which all together have several hundred unsheltered homeless, and homelessness in the overlay of Alameda County Supervisor, District 1, which has at least 20% of the Alameda County homeless, over 1,600 homeless out of the Alameda Counties, more than 8,000 homeless as the, as per the January 2019 Housing and Urban Development Department's point-in-time count, which we know to be a drastic undercount. Alameda County is spending over $110 million per year directly on homelessness, and we do not know how much out of the Alameda County Sheriff's unaudited $454 million of annual budget is spent on the homeless. I revisit the parable of the last Livermore City Council meeting, where a boy is on an ocean shore after a king tide and a mass of starfish are stranded high above the water. The beleaguered starfish are symbolic of the homeless. They are rotting and dying. The boy is walking way up the beach to gather the starfish, one at a time, and return them to the ocean. An old curmudgeon comes along and tells the boy he will never save all of them, and the boy promptly marches up the beach, collects a starfish, carries it to the sea, throws it in the water, and proudly announces, "No, but I saved that one." I am one of the starfish way up on the beach. I have lived predominantly in the Arroyo Mocho and Arroyo Seco watersheds in the Livermore sphere of influence continuously for the last, over the last 52 months. I know many starfish. I knew some of the dead starfish. I found my friend Carl Fainer face down on the ground. He had been homeless in his truck here for over 10 years. He died at Valley Care in Pleasanton 80 hours after I found him. He was an unlucky starfish. The boy did not find him. I was acquainted with young homeless Jamie. Jamie was found dead at the end of some cordage behind a convenience store here in Livermore. He was an unlucky starfish. Odd that the boy did not find Jamie, for Jamie was quite the physical and metaphysical intrepid wanderer. One time, I was in a rural, remote location near the Livermore municipality, and Jamie appeared like an apparition at dusk after a hot Livermore day. After some desperately needed drinking water, he was on his way to an unlucky starfish fate. I did not know the 23-year-old homeless Atlanta woman whose body was found in the Altamont landfill early last year. She too was an unlucky starfish, not found by the boy. I could go on. When are we going to realize this parable and the case-by-case mode to homelessness is stupid, highly expensive, and mostly ineffective? A functional politic is needed for a better solution to homelessness. A functional politic is going to have the epiphany that a commons with a clear vision is a better approach to homelessness.
Thank you. Neil Herrick, Mary Ann Brent, Elizabeth Judge.
Mr. Mayor, city council, city oracles, I do not like the word staff, so oracles, we'll go with that. I just returned from a wonderful multi-week vacation to Costa Rica and Panama. I was surprised when I came home and found that our Measure P issue is having some stress. I would like to suggest everyone out there in the TV audience, please stop defacing each other's posters. We have young people we're trying to set an example for. I remember 1968. I was a member of the Livermore 4-H at that time. Completely different world. I admire you guys. I admire the parents. Where those 50 years went, I have absolutely no idea. Yeah, I'd like to stop this divisiveness. When I was in Costa Rica, they're having elections. But each political party has their own flags. So you roll through a small community, they're all nothing but blue and red party flags. You would owe to another community, yellow and blue flags, as far as you can see. Along the coast, white and red flags. You don't see a mixture of any flags. The division is that deep in their culture. The corruption, the lack of attention to the voters' needs is that entrenched. So I encourage anyone, whether you want to vote for Measure P, against Measure P, whatever, I kind of know where I'm going, but I'm open to a debate, a discussion. I ask that we all handle this in a mature fashion, a professional fashion. We have children to set an example for. And come on, guys, we're all adults. If you did this at work, you'd be fired. So thank you very much. Nice to be back. I enjoyed my vacation. I'll be honest, I have missed the city council. I have missed these meetings. I dearly miss Mr. Winty. I'm not sure where he's at. Without his oracle tonight, I'm going to be lost. But thank you, and I look forward to seeing how this resolution goes. I ask everyone, whether P passes or turned down, let's all work together. Let's make this better. We've got a town and we have some, some future we need to work on, and I want to ask everyone to work together, up, down, left, or right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herrick. Mary Ann Brent, Elizabeth Judge.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council and staff. I would like to caution the city council that scare tactics relating to a downtown plan are a mistake. You have dragged out state housing bills, one after the other, and now a parcel tax. These are non-issues. You are threatening to punish the Livermore community if they do not vote as the city council wishes. City council, you are, you and your supporters have called us liars. You have bullied us. You have said that there is no other hotelier when you well know that there is at least one that exists. You have called the Central Park Plan a drawing and not a plan at all, when you well know that the plan exists. You have asked for a comparison of costs, and of course, we cannot respond because you have not presented your costs. You have claimed that implementing the Central Park Plan would delay building by four years, and we have shown that our timeframe is similar to yours. What will you claim next? City council, do not threaten or punish Livermore residents for wanting a downtown plan, a downtown space that is better than your plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brent. Elizabeth Judge.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. In the world of community organizations and volunteer groups, if you asked the group what the group wanted and then you did the opposite, you would show up at the next meeting only to realize you were there all by yourself. Leadership means helping people be successful at doing what they want to accomplish. The decline in civility in this city evidently happened long before I first observed it, some three and a half years ago, at a steering committee meeting that brought in the hotel experts. This room was full of strangers to me, but I could feel the animosity way back then as I watched the interpersonal behavior. Dr. Phil would have had a field day. It affected me so that I cautioned in a letter to The Independent that the rankers should take a hike, because in the end, we just might need each other. Downtown folks need the rest of us to pay for the things they want, and the same is true for the wineries. I vividly remember that council meeting nine months later, when you brought forth the downtown plan that shocked many of us speechless. Three of you figuratively threw us under the bus as it waited outside with music and free food for the groups that won the day. As it turned out, those are now the "yes on P" folks. Ms. Steinbrenner showed up and made no bones about it when she said, "Shame on you," and meant every word. Fast forward to the present and what we have, instead of touting the good things about your plan, some of you choose to attack individuals in opposition. That's what bullies do. You make your professional staff complicit with your intentional deception, most notably with the January 13th overlay of flexible square footage for two buildings in the Central Park Plan, as though the footprint would change to obliterate other features. You blame the opposition for a stink bomb, which benefited nobody but Measure P, getting the front page of the Sunday East Bay Times and sympathy from the uninformed. The spirit in a school is inspired by the principal. The spirit and conduct of a community is inspired by its leaders. Trashing individuals on Nextdoor lowers the status of any leader, no matter what the issue. Having folks so riled up that one suggested on Nextdoor that maybe they should burn down the building owned by The Independent, and another said, "Well, that was wrong, but only because you would go to jail." And why is the police association taking a political stance, supporting the "yes on P" side, with all the ranker and fear tactics offered up at the chambers propaganda house parties? If there is a concern about the decline in the character of city politics here, I respectfully suggest that council members take responsibility for your own actions, if they apply. As my mother would say, "If the shoe doesn't fit you, don't wear it." And do something to reel in the outrageous behavior that is permanently harming Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judge. Couple of comments on the, we had earlier in the, in the evening, a couple of members of the 4-H group asked about park maintenance, and the, our staff will mention this to the park, but the city of Livermore doesn't manage the park fields. That's actually done by the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District. So we will get ahold of the Park District and, and mention your, your concerns and requests. So thank you very much for, for bringing that up. I just feel compelled to speak to the divisiveness that was mentioned tonight, and, you know, helping people do what they want to accomplish. Yeah, we, we had a 19-member steering committee, which sought to find out what this community wanted. Dr. Carling and Dr. Werner chaired that. And it turned out that the 19-member committee unanimously, unanimously agreed that the hotel needed to front on South Livermore Avenue. Now, there was disagreement on left or right, east or west, but it was unanimous to be on South Livermore Avenue. And we, over 80% of the people that were part of the workshops, 80%, the speaker said, doing what they want to accomplish, over 80% felt that the hotel, they agreed the hotel needed to be on South Livermore Avenue. And how suddenly that narrative has been corrupted into a hotel east of L Street and south of Railroad really is quite remarkable. It's astonishing. But we heard that people wanted it on South Livermore Avenue. And that's what we voted to do as a council, was to take the plan that we heard, we took those priorities and developed a plan based on the priorities that we heard from the And when people talk about divisiveness and what we're doing up here, there were speakers tonight that invoked the downtown process and compared it to the Battle of Britain, where 44,000 innocent civilians died. We're talking about developing a block in my downtown. It's not the Battle of Britain. One of the speakers tonight invoked Niemuller's Ode, which compares this process to the Holocaust. I'm sorry, can we have some sense of perspective here? You're telling the people up here who were elected to represent this city that we're being divisive, and you invoke Niemuller's Ode. That's unconscionable. Talk about a plan that exists. It's a drawing. Where's the traffic analysis? Where's the financial analysis? It doesn't exist because it's a drawing. It's not a plan. You can call it whatever you want. It's a drawing. What we put together as a council and as a city, hearing from thousands of residents, where we heard all the priorities, and we, the elected officials, put together a plan. That's what we're working on, and that's what Measure P is. And I agree with another speaker tonight, but let's stop the vandalizing. I have, I've been in politics for over 30 years in this city. I have never seen signs ripped, cut in half. And it's not, it's not easy to cut those signs in half. But it's happening all over town, and they're disappearing. So I, I don't want anybody to damage any signs, because as one of the signs says, "Compare and Decide," I want a free and open discussion, where we can discuss everything, and all the signs are out, so that people can compare, that they see what the, what the word is in the community, and they can compare the facts and decide. But the vandalism does not allow people to compare and decide. The vandalism has to stop. The attacks have to stop. Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to the council, we're onto the consent calendar. So kids, kids, I don't do this very often. But I know, I really appreciate you folks coming out. That's, 4-H is a great organization. I really appreciate what you guys are here for. So with that, we have 4.01. This is, I was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and we talked a lot about climate change, and that's what 4.01 is about. It's a resolution establishing a Climate Action Plan Advisory Committee and approving the rules of procedure and the appointment process. And at my State of the City about a week and a half ago, I talked about this, that we were moving ahead with our Climate Action Plan. And with that, I have several speaker cards. We have Miranda Monroe, Lubba Leah Castner, and Greg Scott. Okay, Miranda Monroe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. I understand that tonight you are establishing the Climate Action Plan Advisory Committee and approving the committee's rules and procedure. I strongly support this local attempt to combat global climate change. I believe this plan is primarily looking at curbing emissions. This is important and necessary, but I believe the scope of work should be broader. Global climate change stems from our impact on multiple ecosystems and their impacts on each other. It is a holistic problem-- It is a holistic problem and the solutions must also be holistic. This means looking at all of the inputs and outputs of our community and looking into ways to go carbon negative. In addition to emission reduction, I would like us to be looking at waste reduction, containment, and elimination, what and where our consumer goods are coming from, and carbon sequestration. We should set a goal as a community to go zero waste. Our garbage ends up all over the place. This does not necessarily have an immediate impact on our climate, but when it disrupts our ecosystems, it ultimately impacts our climate and our global economy. Consumer goods come from all over. This has a huge impact on our carbon footprint. The public should be informed of the travel of each thing they buy and things that can be sourced locally should be sourced locally. Lastly, we should be talking about carbon sequestration. We could be planting trees, we could be landscaping more and better. We could be encouraging people to reduce their use of air conditioning through building and retrofitting smarter, and we could be participating and cooperating with research on strategies such as regenerative agriculture, urban agriculture, and smaller agriculture that have the potential to make our food supply carbon neutral or even carbon negative. I would like to see some more and better landscaping choices, better tree policies, incentives to encourage positive individual choices around housing and home improvement, educational outreach to local farmers and ranchers and other owners of large lots, education and encouragement for carbon-negative landscaping practices in our landscaping companies. And I believe Livermore can make a real impact through educating our citizenry, piloting programs, and modeling local actions for other communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Lubah Leah Kastner? Oh, Leah, I'm sorry. Lubah Leah Kastner.
Hi, my name is Lily Ca... Lubah Leah Kastner. And I want to say I approve of the climate change plan, but it has a whole, all right, bits of plastic. It can end up in rivers and go out to the sea. Where they decompose and emit greenhouse gases. They break down, and, and where they break down and get eaten by phyto, by a plankton, which die and cannot process as much carbon, as much of our greenhouse gases. If we put filters before rivers, clean up, up trash that is near rivers, it might eat, not throw off our ecosystems. I care a lot about the world because I want myself and my children and many generations after that to have cleaner to breathe, clean water to drink, and an environment that is safe to live in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Greg Scott, Van Rini, uh, Daniel Lieberman.
Greg Scott. I get the science. I get, you know, the thirty-five billion metric tons of CO2 in the atmosphere per year from fossil fuel emissions alone, fifty-five billion metric tons of human-produced carbon dioxide emissions and the forty percent, um, persistence of carbon dioxide in a hundred years. And also, uh, from out of Lawrence, Livermore, the experiment that showed from that CO2 emissions that we're gaining thermal energy on the five-hundred-and-forty-million-square kilometers of the Earth's surface. But as far as climate action, it seems to be that, mostly talk. What we really need to do is incorporate a socioeconomic justice factor into it. It's great that there's a lecture at Bankhead Theater for thirty-two to forty dollars from a climate action, uh, nonprofit, but how much is social justice incorporated into these resolutions? It's really important. The, the housing element needs to be in this Climate Action Plan. The social injustice of, uh, of the Climate Action Plan is contributing greatly to our emissions. At the last MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Committee meeting, it was cited that in the last eighteen months, there's twelve thousand more cars going over the Altamont Pass. There's ninety-seven thousand cars per day now going over the Altamont Pass. The average commuter is putting over fourteen metric tons of CO2 into the atmosphere on that commute. And forty percent of that CO2 is going to be around in one hundred years. So, housing and social justice needs to be a part of any resolution establishing a Climate Action Plan, um, integral to that. And I, I just haven't heard that from the Climate Action people. It, it's a little frustrating. It needs to go beyond talk. We need to change our habits and, um, good luck to us. I mean, I watched this video of this woman on the Thuaides Glacier. It's known as the Doomsday Glacier in Antarctica, and she's a scientist. And they put down a probe through the stick ice to the water temperature below, and she was so shocked at the water temperature. The woman was so emotional that in the video, she could hardly talk. It's so drastic. I mean, last year, we lost four-hundred-billion tons of ice off of Greenland. It's a climate emergency, and housing needs to be part of the Climate Action Plan and social justice also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, Van Rini, Daniel Lieberman, Jean King.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, staff. I'm seeking a little bit of clarification on the, uh, having read the staff report on the role of the consultant with, that was hired to facilitate the Climate Action Plan. I'm also wondering if there's any, uh, indication of what the interagency purview of the Climate Action Advisory Committee might be with regard to cooperating and establishing policies with the Parks District, Wheels, uh, Valley Link, any other number of different, uh, agencies and intra-city agencies, or I should say advisory groups as well, you know, like facilities and maintenance and the like. So, if there's some idea of what may be done with regard to integrating all those various groups, uh, in this effort, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rini. Uh, just to answer that question, I mentioned that's something that the committee once formed is going to be considering.
So, we will certainly be reaching out to other entities. Obviously, they all have their own governing boards and make their own decisions, but certainly we'll be looking for opportunities to collaborate. Ultimately, we'll be seeking council direction on any specific action, but the role of the committee is to come up with ideas, provide recommendations, to evaluate options.
Great, thank you. Uh, Daniel Lieberman, uh, Jean King, Carl Wintey.
All right, I'm gonna time myself here. Dan Lieberman, hi. I've been working on climate-related issues from policy and technology and economics perspective for about twenty years. I moved to Livermore just a little under a year ago, so, uh, got here as soon as I could. I was actually working with one of the consultants that was interviewed for, uh, the Climate Action Plan for Livermore, uh, for ten years and, earlier in my career. Won't say whether it was the one that was selected or not. Uh, but for the last dozen years, I've been working for a energy company here in California. So, just a few things that I noted after having looked at the 2012 Climate Action Plan and looked through the proceedings of last month's council meeting. I took note of a couple of things that I felt were relevant to share, uh, with the mayor and the council and staff. First, I wanted to just applaud the, the city and its leadership demonstrated through recognition of the need to update the Climate Action Plan since 2012. There's a lot there that certainly can be updated, and a lot has happened in the last, uh, several years in the states and around the world in recognition of that. Second, it's worth noting, I think, and calling particular attention to the city council and staff's effort to highlight and focus efforts in the updated Climate Action Plan on adaptation. The 2012 Climate Action Plan really did not do that, and I think as we look forward to living in a world that's going to be drastically different than the one we've lived in in the past, adaptation is critically important. Uh, no matter what we do to curb emissions, uh, there will still be a need for that, particularly as we experience as we are already, uh, water-related issues, uh, storm-related issues with respect to severity and frequency, et cetera. Third, mitigation. So, this is by far the biggest and most important piece of any Climate Action Plan. I encourage the city, council, and staff to look across the board in its efforts to identify opportunities to reduce emissions. Most municipalities, I think, fall victim to a couple of unfortunate situations with respect to their Climate Action Plans. Number one, not looking across sectors and industries sufficiently. So, comprehensively across the economy, and that includes not just residential emissions, not just industrial emissions, also agriculture, also other sources that are perhaps hard to mitigate emissions from, but, uh, a lot of opportunities do exist. So, it's important to, to take a full look across the economy. Number two is not funding adequately the measures that are called for in the Climate Action Plan. Uh, one of the previous, uh, speakers right up here said that it was mostly talk, and I think that's really important to focus on actually funding the, um, measures that are called for. So, that means taking advantage of some of the measures that have been brought up by folks right here in Livermore. I think we, we're proud and happy to be, there's my three minutes, living in a area where we've got world-renowned policy and technology experts, so let's take advantage of them. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Uh, Jean King, Carl Wintey.
Hi, good evening. I commend you for bringing this up. I am very glad that you're starting this, uh, program for the climate change. I wish there were more climate change initiatives coming from nationally, coming from the top down, but there doesn't seem to be. So, I think it's very appropriate that we start and do a, from the bottom up, from locally, everything that we can do. There's one city, Santa Monica, which has done a great thing on their own. Um, there are two programs that, that show here, uh, what the interest is in the city. One was the Wild and Cynic Film Festival, which was sold out in January, and, and I thought Ann Brown would come here and speak about that today because she has a lot of information about that and some, uh, organization that she's running. The second was the talk at the Ray Doral Speakers Series sponsored by the Lawrence Lab Foundation. And among other comments, the speaker, Ellie Cohen, stated that we need to do more than be carbon-neutral. We need to be carbon-negative. And back in the sixties and the seventies, when the rivers were burning and you could not see the hills around Livermore because the air quality was so bad, there were a lot of citizens groups that started up. Save the Bay, Green Belt Alliance, we had a Valley Ecology Center at that time, and we did do things. The country did do things, and sometimes it takes the, the local people starting up from everything. And I think it's very necessary to do that, and I am glad that you have started this initiative, and I hope that it is very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Uh, Carl Wintey.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name's Carl Wintey. I live just outside of town. I apologize for not being able to be here for the public forum and to take that advantage to thank you. I'm speaking on 4.01, I believe, but I think I'm pretty happy I didn't come to the, to the pre-one because I thought those last five speakers were awesome. Every single one down the list, the first speaker about how much we can do. This is large. Take a large-scale look at it. The younger speaker who spoke, we salute you. Thank you so much. I think it was you, was it you? Good job. It's appreciated. Taking part. Greg Scott, as always, brings up housing, social justice, transportation included. Climate change impacts all of this. We all know this. Make sure this scope is appropriately large. Inter, uh, interagency with your parks, your transportations, the other cities, right? Stating the obvious a little bit, but this is a big-scale issue. We want her to live in the best possible world possible. I know you all believe that. This is that large. Educate, communicate, mitigate, take a full look at it, and fund appropriately. You just throw up unfunded mandates about doing something. No, we want to go beyond talk. You hear me say, "We want to go beyond talk on homelessness," right? Don't turn over a half a million dollars because we couldn't spend it when people are cold or they're hungry. Like, taking those simple solutions to get stuff done. Obviously, what the carbon impact is across everything, what the ability of humans to move molecules around this world and make them new and decompose them and combust them, fizz them, infusion them, all that stuff. There's a lot of stuff we gotta deal with as a society. I appreciate y'all bringing this up. Think large, as they said. Thank you, staff, for all that you do to make this city the best place, for those that put on a bulletproof vest to go to work. We salute you. Those in uniform, we salute you. Thank y'all so much for what you do. Cheers.
Thank you, Mr. Wintey. Okay, I'm gonna go through the rest of the, uh, the consent calendar and then I'll bring it back to the council. Uh, Greg Scott, 4.04, which is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of the additional one-point-two-million dollars uh, from Fund 611, which is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Ken Bradley, uh, speaking on the same item, 4.04. And Andrew Barker, speaking on, uh, 4.06, uh, the agreement with Granite Rock Company uh, for the construction of the Iron Horse Trail. So, Mr. Scott.
Greg Scott. Affordable housing. What is affordable housing? In an area where low income is eighty-thousand dollars a year or less salary, are we gonna pay our waiters and waitresses forty dollars an hour, plus benefits? The state of California has two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-four affordable housing units. In a state that has one-point-three-million people at the federal poverty level or below, federal poverty level, the cost of living in California is fifty-six percent above the national average. What would it take? You, you could throw billions at this. Billions. You're looking at a million. You could throw billions. It's, it's such a token. We have to think of a different solution. We have to think of a different way of using the money. You know, tiny homes, small homes, um, you know. I think Nora Campos had a great idea with Assembly Bill, State Assembly Bill, twenty-one eighty, seventy-six, which I know didn't have a defined funding source, but it was an idea. We are not gonna solve our problems through regular housing. We are not gonna solve our problems with more encompassing solutions like the facing the jobs, housing, imbalance. Uh, a lot of people work the lower jo, lower-income jobs in Livermore. They live in Tracy, they live in Manteca, they live in Modesto, Escalon. We need to encompass that in the solution. We keep throwing money at things, we keep borrowing money. Borrowing money has an enormous environmental cost. In fact, it has an emissions cost also, especially in a world that's, the household debt is increasing enormously. Uh, the federal deficit is increasing enormously. All this borrowing is having a considerable effect. So, we need to figure out how to use less resources to solve our problems and be more encompassing on our problems.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, Ken Bradley for 4.04. Uh, Andrew Barker, 4.06, uh, the resolution on the Iron Horse Trail. Mr. Bradley.
Good evening. My attention was drawn to this bill, or proposal, because it looked like a really sweetheart loan, three percent. Uh, and so, I went to look for the loan terms, and it refers to the loan agreement, but they're not here. And I wasn't able to find it this afternoon. So, I'm not sure what's in the loan agreement that, if it affects it at all, or if it's something that might change our mind. It's gonna be spending almost seven-hundred-thousand dollars a unit, and so it should be really nice units when they get done. It's for developmentally disabled, extremely low, very low. It's a facility that is needed, and, uh, uh, I understand that they're gonna pay the three percent through profits and, uh, annual surplus cash, and I don't see any projection of how they plan to have surplus cash dealing with extremely low and very low income. And this is a portion of the population that does need to take care of. The last item is, who's gonna monitor this, uh, performance that they keep their word and rent to, the extremely low and the very low? My experience with, uh, Housing Commission funding a, a project for seniors, after a few years, they had fewer units than they were supposed to have, uh, for the affordable units, and were violating, uh, their terms of their agreement. And the Housing Authority had difficulty trying to keep up with them and, uh, make them live up to their responsibilities. And I guess finally, this is only for fifty-five years that it's affordable for the extremely low and very low. And I think, uh, if we're putting money into it, public money in it, what's wrong with in perpetuity? I think it'll still be needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Uh, Andrew Barker. Andrew Barker.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Andrew Barker. I'm talking about item 4.06, about a $2 million pedestrian and bicycle bridge that if you look carefully on the map and go out to where it is, it doesn't actually go anywhere at all. I understand that there's some constraints that you have in terms of, this is a grant funding, and there's only certain places you can put it and so forth, but I encourage you to make sure that at some point we do connect this to useful infrastructure, because as it is now, this bridge is pretty useless. So please work with your staff to somehow connect it to useful bicycle infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Take the questions back in reverse order. When the grant funding comes up, we frequently find projects to get that. And the idea is to eventually connect this iron horse, all these iron horse trail segments. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We have a long-term plan for the Iron Horse Trail. This is an important piece, and we will certainly be working on additional segments in the future.
Doesn't it extend from Isabel all the way over to Miria?
It does.
So it's not just the bridge?
Right. And there's an existing trail that actually runs beyond the housing there.
Right. Okay.
Great. And Mr. Bradley asked about performance guarantees, who's going to be overseeing the property?
So the city does monitor all of those obligations. The bondholders will also be monitoring that as well. And the question was also asked about the 55 years. Typically, the city is not paid back in that time period, and we are able to extend that period at the end of that 55-year duration. So in effect, it will much, very likely be affordable for a much longer term.
For the which?
It will likely be affordable for a much longer term than 55 years.
Much longer than 55 years.
Because they won't have paid back the city within that timeframe. So the loan would roll over at that time.
Is there a prohibition on making it in perpetuity?
Not a prohibition, but essentially there is state law that requires a vote of the people when you extend beyond certain timeframes. And so all of our nonprofit cooperative agreements with nonprofit housing developers essentially stipulate to that same timeframe so that we don't, every time we want to build a housing project, have to go to a vote of the people. But as your community development director said, the intent of this is that this would be affordable for the entire life of the project.
Okay, great. Thank you. And going back to 4.01, one of the biggest issues when it comes to greenhouse gas production and the like is, of course, the jobs-housing balance. And the city of Livermore has a 1 to 1.3 jobs, 1.3 to 1 jobs-housing balance. So we get it. There are counties in Northern California that produce 17 jobs per housing unit, and that's one of the reasons that you have, as Mr. Scott pointed out, 92,000 cars going over the Altamont every day, is because they can't, this is what's driving up the cost of housing, is the fact that you have creation of jobs without housing. And some of the recent legislation that we've seen actually exempts counties and exempts some of the cities where they're creating jobs, and it exempts them from having to build the housing. So we're doing the best that we can here, but it's going to take a tremendous effort, and I appreciate Ms. King's point about it's going to be a national effort, because you can't keep creating hundreds of thousands of jobs and no housing units, because people have to live somewhere. And that's what's driving up the cost of living here and driving up the cost of housing is this incredible imbalance. So one of the best things the state could do is to mandate that if you're going to create the jobs, you have to create the housing. But I haven't seen that coming anywhere. The only thing I've seen is requiring the cities like Livermore Pleasant and Dublin to build the housing for the agency or for the areas that are creating the jobs. So it's going to take a concerted effort and a lot more than just one city can do. So with that, any discussion, further discussion on the items on the consent calendar? Councilmember Monroe.
Turn on my mic, pick up my phone. Yeah, I had a couple of comments. So as this has been coming up, I've been speaking to members of the community, and then I had some comments on some of the comments tonight. So I know that the, I've been speaking to some of the members of the school district. I believe that Regina Brinker is here, and I want to apologize because I didn't see an exchange. So I know that, have word that the school district is very supportive of some of the work going forward, and I would like to encourage us as a city to work with that. I will be bringing it up at the Intergovernmental Meeting to try to see if we can make that happen. So I just wanted to thank anyone from the school district who's here and any students who might be here. I know that the school district is working on educating students around this, and we'd like to work with you. So that was one item. I appreciate the comments, Ms. King's comment on the top-down and the bottom-up. I think that too often, it is absolutely necessary that we focus on the global issues. There are global issues that we must be aware of, national issues that we must be aware of. However, one of the things we can do with the city is look in our own literal backyards. We can look at how our systems, city systems are designed, how we think about when we drive and when we don't, where we plant trees, where we don't, and some of the issues that Ms. Monroe, yes, relation, brought up with regard to all the sequestration. I can't remember the whole long list. It's a long list. Those are all things that I hope we will be looking at. I wanted to speak to Mr. Scott's comments on the traffic over the Altamont. So I'll be speaking under, in my report out, about meetings around housing issues, affordable housing, homelessness, and the A-Bag meeting. And let me assure you that this is, this is being spoken about at the, both as a social justice issue and as a climate issue. These are issues that are very much being taken into account. How successfully is another story, but they are certainly being talked about. So with regard to what we're being asked to do, actually, with the climate action, I wanted to comment on the, wait a minute, I've got to get the right piece up here. We've been asked to recommend all our combination of the following groups: environmental advocacy, civic advocacy, business, community, residents, underserved communities, youth, national laboratories, and wine growers. I would, I think that's great. I think I would move wine growers to the agricultural community as a whole, you know, so if we can broaden that. In terms of youth, I would like to make sure that we have youth on there that are representative of, you know, youngest to oldest, recognizing that the very youngest probably don't have the bandwidth for the complete process, but hopefully we're reaching out to them. And for each of these groups, I can imagine two, I recognize a committee of nine is, we don't want more than that, but I do look forward to making sure that we gather good information across the board, and I think we're well on the way to that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Couple other things. One of the things that we're doing, we've been working very hard with 14 other agencies, is ValleyLink. The MTC opposed, bar to Livermore, as did the mayors of the three largest cities in the Bay Area. But we continue to persevere, and now we're working on ValleyLink. There are 15 cities and counties and agencies that are working to bring ValleyLink in. This is going to be a critical piece of infrastructure if we're going to be working on greenhouse gas production and the Climate Action Plan. I was back in Washington, DC, meeting with the Department of Transportation about possible funding for ValleyLink. Also, state is looking at funding for transit, so we need to ensure that ValleyLink is included in the faster proposal. It's going to be going up onto the ballot. And we need San Joaquin County to step up when they do their, when it goes back on the ballot for their self-funding transit measure, probably in two years. We need them to step up as well. So it's going to be a major concerted effort, but ValleyLink is going to be a critical piece for the, our Climate Action Plan for this region. So with that, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Coonburn. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Very good. Thank you very much. Hang in there. And so...
Honorable Mayor, did want to clarify that your collective motion did include the adjustment of the wine grower suggestion from staff to essentially be represented from the agricultural community.
Since she made the motion, I presume that she included that in her motion. It was simplified, but I caught the nuance.
Very good.
But thank you for clarifying. 5.01, hearing to consider a disposition and development agreement with the Quest Science Center for the lease and development of the downtown Science and Society Center cultural facility. Very exciting stuff.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Christine Martin, your Deputy City Manager. I'm here to present the disposition and development agreement for the Quest Science Center this evening. Just as a reminder, in January of 2018, council approved the downtown plan. The downtown plan included two cultural facilities that were to be located within the Stockman's Park boundary, which is located in the red dashed line area here. That is the Stockman's Park boundary. And the two cultural facilities are here. This is the Science Center, and this is the Black Box Theater. These facilities were to be located within the park to engage with and help activate the park, providing a place for residents and visitors to experience indoor and outdoor performances, as well as explore ways in which science influences our daily lives. In June of 2018, after reviewing responses to the city's request for qualifications, council directed staff to enter into an exclusive negotiating rights agreement, an ENRA, with Quest Science Center, formerly the Livermore Science and Society Center. And that ENRA was to establish procedures and standards leading to the development and disposition agreement before you this evening. Based on council direction, Quest and the city have completed DDA negotiations, and the DDA before you tonight establishes terms for the lease and development of the city-owned site to Quest and the responsibilities of each partner. Key terms of the DDA, I'll go through a few of them, include the following. The city will make available the property and provide the required parking, but no funds for construction or operation of the center. The DDA includes a requirement that Quest contribute $10,000 annually to a community facilities maintenance district, which helps fund the ongoing maintenance of Stockman's Park. The DDA requires completion of the L Street parking garage prior to the beginning of construction or identification of other alternative parking. It requires provision of a minimum of 50% cash in hand of anticipated construction costs and verified pledges to cover the remaining. It also requires a provision of 50% cash in hand of anticipated costs for the first year of operating expenses and verified pledges to cover the remaining. The DDA requires execution of a lease agreement with additional performance standards related but not limited to an endowment, annual financing, reporting, and governance structure. The overall term of the DDA is 34 years, with an option for three 10-year extensions. Recognizing that the intent of the Science Center is to activate Stockman's Park and the downtown area, the DDA requires the Science Center to be open an average of six days and 42 hours per week. And lastly, the DDA specifies a lease price of $1 per year, which reflects the limitation of the use of the property as a Science Center, the requirement that it be open to and provide educational display and programs to the public on an ongoing basis, and the cost of Quest participation in the facilities maintenance, community facility maintenance district. The approval of the DDA this evening will allow the Science Center, identified in the downtown plan, to move forward and be developed in a manner that is consistent and compatible with Blacksmith Square, the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association easement, and the approved downtown plan. This cultural facility is a critical element in the activation and successful operation of Stockman's Park, and therefore, staff recommends the city council direct staff to file a notice of determination, consistent with the provisions of SEQA, and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the disposition and development agreement and other documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of the DDA. And this concludes my presentation, and the applicant is available for the presentation as well this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions at this point for staff? Do you have any cards? Okay, I've got, ooh, the triumvirate here. We have Lisa Traumovich, Alan Burnham, and Dave Finster, past president of the Stockman's Association.
Would the applicant's presentation first?
Oh, pardon me?
Yeah, was Monja going to talk first?
The applicant does have a short statement to make.
Oh, I thought this was going to be the statement.
No, no, no.
Since the name was on the card...
A group of interested parties.
Since his name was on the, oh, the, okay, a different applicant. We have Monja Lane as applicant.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to make a few brief comments. Wanted to say that the Quest Science Center Board of Directors sincerely appreciates the inclusion of the cultural core in the design of Stockman's Park and the contract with the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association, which allowed us this opportunity to propose a nonprofit Science Center to further enhance the quality of life for residents here in Livermore and the greater Tri-Valley area. We also thank the city staff for their expertise and their working relationship as we negotiated the Science Center performance terms for the peer review, which provided validation of this project. And we thank people, most of all from all walks of our community, who encouraged us to form this nonprofit organization because they believe in the mission of the Science Center, to be a positive force in the lives of us all. The terms of the DDA are very fiscally stringent. We've done a review of many case studies for construction of other Science Centers, and we are in full agreement with this fiscally conservative approach that will allow us to proceed only when we've reached best-practice financial milestones. We've reviewed many cases of cultural centers and museums that have had financial issues. We've reviewed their lessons learned, and we've developed a capital funding plan that will meet the stringent milestones that we have in this DDA. As an organization, the Quest Science Center, we are ready to begin this project to bring a long-talked-about Livermore Science Center to reality. We appreciate your consideration, the approval of the project this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, we have Lisa Traumovich, Alan Burnham, Dave Finster, followed by Carl Winty.
Hi, I'm Lisa Traumovich, President of Livermore Shakespeare Festival.
I'm Dave Finster, representing Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association.
And I'm Alan Burnham, representing Quest Science Center.
We met during the public outreach process, and were involved in the development of Stockman's Park Unified Concept.
Stockman's Park is intended to bring our arts, science, and ranching roots together, along with honoring our veterans, and this is to be done in one common place.
We need to continue moving forward with the plan, and we urge you to approve this DDA as a necessary step in that direction. Thank you.
Mr. Burnham, well, I'll get Carl Winty first. Mr. Winty.
My name is Carl Winty. Good to see you all again. This great sort of vision, vision for a future of our area. Somebody just handed me this Earth Week planning celebration and meeting Thursday, February 20th, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Boswell Arts Center, where we're educating about climate change and the likes. I have this vision where that could be at the Boswell Center, and it could be at the Science, excuse me, the Quest Center, the artist formerly known as the Science and Society Center, right there on that map as it's laid out. We have an activated Stockman's Park. We have thriving businesses. We have... We have restaurants. We have places where you can go get some cheese and bread and sit out on that lawn. We have a Black Box Theater that is able to support such speakers as this gentleman who's speaking at the library to, on Thursday, February 27th, 6:00 to 8:30 p.m., Climate Crisis Solutions, the Tri-Valley Citizens Climate Education. So this gentleman is speaking at the Black Box Theater, activated outside. There's a stage outside that's able to play music and have a celebration of the earth while we know that there are great challenges that face us. There is a statue of a, of a stockman and a vet, where we're celebrating both, our community and our culture. Dare I say, maybe somebody in that environment has a glass of wine to celebrate our history of wine and our culture of wine. Some of them stay at the hotel that is right there and that is built, that is feasible, and that's going to get done. At the Bankhead Theater, we have this great play that was put on about what happens when the tide waters don't recede out of Miami and how life changes, or other things that are creative to activate that whole space and the Boswell Center for the great things that people are doing. I'm so excited about that. I'm so excited about moving forward. I'm so excited about not spending time on those 8.2 acres. We have so much better things to do. Let's not let perfect get in the way of good. We have awesome people right there. It's a great plan. Let's have this continue to move forward for the betterment of our city, our community, our state, our nation, our world, all of it. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Wintey.
And I strongly support them.
Well, thank you for clarifying that position. Mr. Burnham, quick question. There's, it's, there's been a lot of confusion recently, and we've all seen a, a drawing of a different configuration. Have you, has the Quest Center been in any discussions with the Central Park Group regarding the placement of the Quest Center?
No.
Okay. So, there's a, there's a drawing that has the, a science building, the facility next to the L Street Parking Garage. Do you have anything to do with that facility?
Uh, no, we, we, as hopefully you have seen, have developed a plan.
Oh, I have. I just wanted to ask, I just wanted to clarify.
And so, that's, that's our plan. The other one is not a plan.
Okay, yeah, so, but you have nothing to do with that other facility?
No.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to clarify that point because there's been a lot of misinformation bandied about, so I just wanted to clarify that. Great, thank you so much. I'm, I'm extremely excited about this. I saw the demos that you guys have done at the Bankhead, and, you know, a number of places in town, and this, this is going to be very exciting, so I can't wait. Okay, bring it back to the council, close the public hearing. Questions or comments from the council?
I'll move, we accept staff's recommendation.
All right.
Can you make a comment first?
Certainly, well, we have, we have a motion, and it's by Councilmember Carling, and seconded by Councilmember Monroe, and now a comment.
I just was noticing, I was thinking a little bit about the genesis of this and the care with which this, in the way this was taken forward. So first of all, I, I really wish that Mr. Finster, Ms. Traumovich, and Mr. Burnham had done this as a trio in poetry and song, given that this was the poet laureates' report. Next time, I will expect that. I'm just letting you know. So, how...
They're going to break into Light of Rose, actually, the way they all came up there.
You know, there's so much you could do with this. But more seriously, I was first became aware of this in fall of 2019, 2017, when this was an idea. So we're now in winter of 2020, and over that time, it's gone from an idea into consulting with experts on how to design centers. It's going to actually with architects, figuring out how to fund it, working with the city to develop a plan that meets the city's guidelines. And now, we have something that is extremely well, well put together. I'm very excited by it. One of the things I was really pleased to hear was when Monja Lane said, look, this is really, this is, we've been held to a higher standard than most other, other places, and we welcome that because it means that we will not, we will likely be successful, give us a greater chance to be successful. Wow, that is, I, how wonderful to say, we want to succeed, and therefore, thank you, city, for making it hard for us. So, hooray. So I just, you know, thank you to staff for the work you've done. Thank you to Quest for all the work you've done. And yeah, let's, that's all I got.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Warner?
A couple of things. I think this is a, going to be a good facility. I also see the synergy in its location with the Black Box Theater and the Blacksmith Square and the, the rest of the park, and the statue and everything. So I think it's, it's a wonderful overall plan. And I also wanted to second what Councilmember Monroe said, is if you look at the terms and conditions in this DDA, they are fairly stringent, and I'm, I'm very glad that the proponents of this embrace them. So I think we will have a good facility here, and it will last. So I'm all in favor of this.
Well, I agree with, especially with the, the idea of the synergy. As Mr. Wintey pointed out, the Black Box Theater playing out into Stockman's Park. I envision programs starting at the, at the Black Box Theater and then moving over to the Science Center, or even vice versa. And so I think that everything comes together, together very nicely. So great. With that, we've got a motion. Second, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Great, very good. Thank you. Yes, okay, yeah, go for it, yeah. Okay, moving on to 5.02. This is the hearing to consider a quest to develop a three-story mixed-use building in a northeast corner of Third Street and K Street. Trish Ponto and Steve Stewart presenting.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The proposed project includes a downtown specific plan amendment, application to re-designate three parcels located on the southern half of the block bounded by Second Street, J Street, and Third Street and K Street. So that's shown here in the red. The project also includes a downtown designer view application to develop a three-story mixed-use building on the northeast corner of Third Street and K Street, and that's shown in the blue on the map. The planning commission staff are recommending approval of the applications, and the City Council makes the final decision. The specific plan amendment would re-designate these three parcels from downtown specific pin's south side neighborhood to downtown core sub-area three. Core sub-area three is shown here in red, and the south side neighborhood is shown in blue. Following the change, the entire block will share the same land use designation. There you go. Permitted uses in core sub-area three include retail sales and services, eating and drinking establishments, publicly owned parking facilities, cultural facilities, and multifamily and attached single-family housing. The project site is surrounded by bank buildings to the west and the north, single-family residences to the east, and Carnegie Park to the south. This land use designation is appropriate here because the proposed uses are compatible with the existing context and will help activate Carnegie Park. The applicant is proposing to develop the mixed-use building on parcel one, which is currently vacant, and given the small size of the parcel and the existing standards that require 15-foot setbacks on both street frontages, re-designating to core sub-area three encourages development of the site, which it will enable to, the applicant to build to the property lines, as is currently permitted on the north half of the block, and will allow more options for the ground floor use, such as specialty retail and restaurants. The maximum building height is three floors and 45 feet in both the existing and proposed land use designations, so they don't get extra building height through the re-designation. And city staff is recommending re-designating the other two parcels to eliminate non-conformity, establish development standard continuity along the block, and foster the continued development and revitalization of downtown Livermore. Parcel two is actually the southern part of a larger parcel that is already part of core sub-area three. The existing bank is a conditionally permitted use under the existing land use designation and would be a permitted use in core sub-area three. And then parcel three is currently developed with a kawa sushi restaurant, and that's a non-conforming use in the existing designation, but would be a permitted use in core sub-area three. And no physical changes to parcels two or three are proposed as part of this project. This slide shows what the downtown core map would look like after the, the change in land use designation. So really, we're talking about this chunk right here. Right now, the downtown core boundary goes straight across, so you'd be moving this chunk up into the core. The downtown designer view application is for a three-story mixed-use building. The building is 39 feet tall to the rooftop, 44 feet to the top of the parapet, and then 50 feet to the top of the rooftop structures. The proposed site plan orients the building to the property lines along Third Street and K Street to activate the sidewalk and street frontage. The ground floor includes approximately 950 square feet of retail space that is oriented to K and Third Streets. A vestibule along K Street leads to separate entrances to the retail and residential spaces. Ground floor roll-up doors along Third Street here with access to the retail space will also be operable during business hours as weather permits. The ground floor also contains a parking garage with driveway access along K Street. The parking garage contains 16 parking spaces, which will be accessible only to residents in the building. 14 of the spaces are provided in a lift system, and Sheet A10 in the development plans provides more details about how this lift system works. The garage also contains one ADA parking space, one electrical vehicle parking space, and bicycle parking for the residents. The project also provides bike parking stalls for the retail space, which are located outside of the building here on K Street. The project proposes to replace the four existing street trees, which are in decline, with four new American ash trees. And the, the streetscape will also feature potted plants that frame the storefront windows and garage doors. Let's see here. Solid waste enclosures will be contained within the building, and then the containers will be moved out to the street for curbside collection. The planning commission is recommending a couple of modifications that staff also supports, and the applicant is in agreement with. One is to explore the feasibility of adding a bulb out at the street corner to increase pedestrian comfort for crossing Third Street, and then possibly accommodate the retail bike racks if there's space. The planning commission is also recommending to add a couple more street trees. The second and third floors contain four market rate rental apartments each for a total of eight units. There are six two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units that range in size from 750 to 1,055 square feet. Open spaces provided through a combination of private patios and a rooftop space. And this slide shows the rooftop deck, which overlooks Carnegie Park, and it has outdoor seating and a variety of small trees and plants. Similar to the First Street mixed-use project between the cinema and the Bank of Italy building, the architecture incorporates modern and traditional architectural features that complement other traditional building styles in downtown Livermore. For example, the building features decorative railing inspired by the Carnegie Library Building, and tall first-floor storefront roll-up doors. So here you can see, kind of see, the picture of the Carnegie Library Building window, and then these are the railings that are proposed for this building that sort of mimic that, what those windows look like. These are the roll-up doors that will allow retail patrons to activate the pedestrian realm, interface with Carnegie Park, and contribute to a visually interesting and active experience along the building frontage. Re-designating the three parcels will increase conformance with zoning and stimulate both near and long-term investment and redevelopment opportunities in downtown Livermore, contributing to its continued economic growth and vibrancy. In the near term, the change in land use designation will enable the applicant to develop a vacant parcel with a proposed mixed-use building, and it will increase the city's rental housing supply, help activate Carnegie Park, and set the stage for future revitalization along Third Street. The city prepared an addendum to the 2009 Downtown Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report to evaluate the project, and found that there were no new or more severe impacts that were not identified in previous EIRs, and no new mitigation measures would be required for the project. The planning commission and staff recommend the City Council adopt two resolutions, approving the addendum and the applications, and directing staff to file the notice of determination consistent with SEQA. So that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions, and the applicant is also here tonight for questions.
Thank you. Questions, Councilmember Monroe?
Yeah, I noticed that one electrical, electric vehicle spot was proposed. I'm a little surprised it's not a heck of a lot more, given the, the growth in electric cars in, in this area. Just wondering how, how that number was arrived at.
I believe that's a requirement from the California Building Code.
Any questions, staff? Okay. All right, does the applicant wish to speak?
Good evening. I'm, I'm Galen Grant, Mayor, members of the council. I'm the President of FCGA Architecture. Happy to be here. I know that you've got a lot of things on your agenda this evening, and we're here to answer questions, if you have them. Patricia has done a wonderful job of already giving you a tour of the project. We're proud of it, and we hope that you support it.
Okay, well, very good. Thank you very much. I've got four-speaker cards. Gene King, Andrew Barker, Ian Carlin, and Carl Wintey. Ms. King.
I just have a couple of questions. One of them is about the parking. We know we're very, all very concerned about the parking downtown, and it seems to me as, if I read it correctly, and I just want to be clear, that they're going to pay in lieu for three parking places for the, for the facility, so that that will make, you know, I know it's only three spaces, but three spaces are, but they're going to pay in lieu instead of actually providing it. And then actually, four parking spaces, public spaces, are going to be gone, if I read it correctly. So that makes a total loss of seven parking in that area. And I, I was interested to see that the parking that was required was one and three-quarters for some of the residential units and one and a half, which is better than some allocations, but maybe not enough. And the other question I have was about the open space, and I, well, just asked if I understand correctly, that there are two things that are required, private open space and public open space to be provided, and I may be wrong, and you're providing some private open spaces. Are also some condition that you make to provide in some way with an in-lufy or something for the public open space that these are required? I may have it wrong, but I just wanted to know if you would answer that. Okay, those are my two concerns, the open space and the parking. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Andrew Barker, Ian Carlin, and Carl Wintey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Andrew Barker. I'm a Livermore resident. This parcel is very difficult to develop on. It's been vacant for a long time, and this development proposal is the best that you're going to see. I think I can be pretty confident in saying that if you add a bunch more requirements to this proposal, you'll, you'll see an empty gravel parcel of this size for the next 20 years. So I urge you to go forward with this proposal in the interest of environmental, climate change, action. I also encourage you not to require too much parking, because we know that parking is the easiest way to induce driving, which causes greenhouse gas emissions. The other, third point I'd like to make is, along Third Street, your downtown specific plan has called for bike lanes since 2004, and this seems like a very good opportunity to include those bike lanes now, since you are constructing this property on the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Ian Carlin and Carl Wintey.
Thank you, Councilor Mayor. So I want to echo the comments that Andrew said, that this is a development that would be excellent to have. I like the emphasis on creating a more pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly development here. You know, putting that bulb out in will definitely enhance things. As someone who almost got hit by a car twice over the weekend, I really appreciate the fact that this will slow down traffic, will make it so that sightlines are much more visible, and intend that. I'd also like to say that adding the bike lanes in here... I'd also like to say that adding the bike lanes in here would be great. One of the reasons why I don't bike to a grocery store, despite the fact that I'm less than a mile from grocery stores, is because there's no good way to cross downtown on bike. First Street is slow, crowded, and just stopping every street. Fourth Street is way too busy. And, you know, Second or Third Street's really the right place to be going across, but the facilities are not there. There's lots of, you know, diagonal parking spaces that just cause all sorts of issues, as well as the fact that the sightlines are not good, and there's lots of other things that get in the way. So this would really help move that in the right direction. In addition to putting people downtown where they can walk, makes part of the act of transportation, activating downtown businesses, Carnegie Park, the farmer's market, all sorts of goodness. I would not worry about the parking, as Andrew said. Environmentally, we need to move away from that. And please don't make, you know, only one electrical parking spot the enemy of good. If you want to get more of those, let's remove some of the parking and make all of that parking electrical, because that's the only way you're going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Wintey.
Carl Wintey, just out of town, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. Thank y'all for being awesome. Support the last two speakers. It seems like a very good thing to do to move forward on this one.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period. A couple of questions. There was a question regarding parking spaces. Losing seven parking spaces. And how many parking spaces are required by the development?
So they are going to be paying the in-lufy for the three required parking spaces for the retail space. And the plans that are in the packet do show the removal of some on-street parking spaces. One is to make room for the driveway to access the garage, and the other three were over on Third Street. And staff had put a condition of approval on the project to explore ways of not getting rid of those parking spaces, if we can. And since the planning commission meeting, the applicant has already redrawn some of the plans to put those spaces back.
Okay.
So we'll be, we haven't reviewed these yet, but we'll be working with them to try to put as many of those spaces back as possible.
Put those spaces back, okay. Getting people out of their cars is a long, concerted process. Great, thank you. And there's a question about public versus private open space?
Yeah, so they will also be paying an in-lufy for the private open space. So the rooftop deck, it's, all right, sorry, public open space. The rooftop deck is only available for residents, so that doesn't count as public open space.
Okay, and of course, you've got Carnegie Park right across the street. People can walk over to the farmer's market. Great. Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Carlin?
So is there a manager on site? I could ask the architect, I guess, if he's paying attention. Mr. Architect?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a manager on site?
No, there is no manager on site.
So what do the residents do if there's an issue with their, in the mechanical parking thing?
Should I speak to that?
They'll just simply, they'll simply call the building owner and have it taken care of.
And I noticed one of the things that this planning commission also asked for a backup generator, I think because of that. I mean, is that something that you're looking at as well?
No, we're not. No, we're not intending to have that.
You don't think you need it with PG&E turning off power? Because, why?
Well...
Do you want to speak to that?
One.
This is Rob Donduro.
I'm the owner of the project, or the property. Backup generator, I don't know. When they shut off the power, I didn't have a backup for my home internet. I didn't have a backup for any of that stuff as well. And just cost. To be honest with you, this project is really, really costly as it is. And if we keep adding more and more to it, we probably won't do it. I'd just be honest with you. We're trying to really come up with something where I would want to live. I think most of the people want to live, but we can't, we can't be doing everything and planning for everything that happens out there. Yes, PG&E is a problem, and believe me, I'm going to, I've paid my fair share of PG&E's problems over the years of installing the extra power and all those things. I would love to put it in. I just don't think it's fiscally able to fit into this project. And I know, you know, I'm just going to be straight up and honest on that part of it.
Okay.
It's quite expensive. The parking units, probably as much as your parking in lufy, to put it in there as well. And yes, there's some downtime, but I also have, there's a lot of, we can't plan for accidents and things to get to my job as well. I can't...
So one level of the parking is below grade, is that right?
Correct.
So did, when you construct, is all the material is going to be within the five-thousand-square-foot footprint of the building?
Yes.
So you'll fence, you'll fence all of that off?
That'll be underneath the building, basically, kind of like a basement. I guess you'd describe it...
You're talking about the parking?
No, I'm talking about construction of the whole building. I mean...
Yeah, it's all within the...
Which are, yeah, it's within the footprint.
Within the property line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Monroe?
I'm curious. So first of all, I would love to see more of the EVs hookups. It's, I'm not going to make perfect the enemy of the good, no worries. I think it's a really lovely project. I am curious about parking. Just how much does one of those spots cost?
Roughly, I can speak on that. But it's roughly the same as your, if I'm not wrong. It's roughly about the same cost as your parking in lufys.
Okay, so could you say, you know, per space that is, just remind me?
I think we're about seventeen...
Eighteen thousand, five hundred a space.
Eighteen, okay. All right, thank you. All right, yeah, and if there's any way to get those in, that's great. It is a very difficult place to develop. I am delighted to see, this is exactly the kind of infill that makes downtown, yeah, does activate downtown, and I hope it goes forward well.
Great. Any other questions?
No question here. Just a quick comment that I would, I want to echo Councilmember Monroe's. I value a project like this, because it does, it lessens the impact of cars driving around downtown. I don't, going past that lot as often as I do, I have no idea how I was going to make it fit. I leave it to the architects for that. But it's, you know, it's intriguing. It's needed, necessary, you know. You drive to work maybe, but you don't have to go anywhere but walk downtown. I do that from my home two miles away anyway, and I roll downtown. So give me more places where you can get out and walk to the places that we want to get to that easily. That's what appealed to me most about it, is it does tend to get you, get centered around where people can go downtown without driving downtown and having to worry about parking.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's the kind of solution that you're looking for downtown to encourage downtown living. We've got corner decks. I think you could tell from the massing model that it's a highly articulated structure, and I think it'll be a fun place to live. And, you know, to be able to live right across from the park, you know, what a wonderful environment to not only look at, but to be able, as you said, mayor, you know, you can walk across the street. It's right there. It's handy.
Okay. Councilmember Monroe, you got another point?
Actually, two. One is clearly this is market rate, and I appreciate that. I just want to keep us all in mind that we are also looking at many different levels. This is not your problem. This is just me, you know, reminding us all. I'm also assuming that bike lanes, the bike lanes that were raised is a separate issue. That would be correct?
It is. We do have that in our long-term plan. We were looking to install those bike lanes, actually, after we'd completed the L Street Garage and have solidified our parking supply in downtown, because we would eliminate a number of spaces along the line.
So as this, in the city's part of making this go forward, would that make sense to include it? I'm not clear on how to implement it for one block or one small area. Or even if this should be discussed at this particular moment, given that it's not about the building, but about the lot, the...
It would not be a condition of the project, but we do have...
No, no, I understand that.
A larger CIP project that would come in the future that would be along the length of Third Street, that would take out the angled parking, put in parallel parking, and put in bike lanes on both sides of the street.
Okay.
Councilmember Carlin?
Yeah, one more question. I think the planning commission did a nice job of reviewing this, but one of the things I think they brought up was the Type B unit in that the patio doesn't, it's not on the edge of the building. Has there been an opportunity to relook at that? Or am I recalling incorrectly that there was some concern?
No, you're recalling correctly. They were talking about that. We had, if, do you want to point to the subject patio right there? We called that their outdoor space.
Right.
The planning commission said it's really not, it's not consistent with their, what their view was of what they wanted. And so their space is actually on the roof of this building, additional space.
Oh, so they get that, plus?
They get that plus an area on the roof.
Specifically for them?
Yeah, it's specifically for them. I, my personal opinion is that we have nine hundred square feet. No, we've got more than that, about over a thousand square feet of roof deck. And to cordon off an area just for one unit seems strange to me.
It'd be two units, though, right?
Yeah, it's two B units. Yeah, that's correct. We can do that. I'm not sure that that's the right way to do it. I would say that, given all of the rooftop open space area, to identify two small spaces equivalent to other deck areas on the roof doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but we'll do it if you like it.
No, I was just, I mean, it was brought up, and I just wanted to know what your thinking was on that.
Sure, and that's what it was.
People have a lot of different reasons for renting spaces, right? And, I mean, they have a choice. They don't have to rent it either, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Vice Mayor Warner?
I just want to follow up on the bike lane. And what you just mentioned, something I hadn't realized before, that it was dependent on the L Street Garage being finished.
It's not dependent, but we're just conscious of the parking supply issue.
Well, yeah, not, well, in that sense, because parking supply is the number-one issue that we've got downtown. So to the extent we want to maintain it, then the L Street Garage is an integral component to getting there in a non-disruptive way.
Correct.
So that, I think that's very important, that people understand that that L Street Garage is focused not only for the First Street, but Second and Third and West.
All right, any further questions or comments? Entertaining motion? Moved by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilmember Carlin. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Pastor DeNemus, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 6.01. Matters for consideration: Discussion and Direction Regarding Potential City Council-Sponsored Measures for Upcoming Elections. We have Vice Mayor Warner of the... Any cards? Yes, we do. The Chair of the Subcommittee, Vice Mayor Warner.
And I'll hand it off to Councilmember Monroe, and she can start off our conversation. And do we want to do that, or hear from the cards first?
I don't know what protocol is.
Well, I was going to say you can sort of tee up the matters, and then we can hear, because this way, the people can speak to...
Why don't we do that?
What we're talking about here.
Okay.
So a few months back, we were appointed to this Subcommittee to determine the need for, is this on? This is on, yes, good. Council response to that, the November initiative that's titled "The Citizens Initiative Changing Development Regulations in Downtown Livermore and Demanding Regulations to Allow Housing at the Civic Center." So it's our duty, our council's duty, to understand what the consequences would result if that initiative were to pass. And this Subcommittee's job is to evaluate those potential effects and then make recommendations regarding the effects. So that's what we're supposed to be doing. That's what we did. Should council want to take action, particularly if we did decide to place an initiative on the November ballot, we need substantial lead time, and so that's why we're presenting the recommendations now. So we considered two topics. One was zoning, and the other was financing. So the November initiative is a complex set of zoning changes, as we know from the 9212 report. Lots of stuff could happen with that. Zoning changes by initiative, whether proposed by the public or by council, can have really serious unintended consequences. And most notably, they can change the city's ability to respond to circumstances in a thoughtful and intentional manner. So constraining the city seemed like a bad idea. We also know that we have a community development department with experienced city planners, and they're the experts in land use. That's what they're trained in. So we do not recommend council place any zoning initiative on the November ballot. However, the council is responsible, you know, perhaps the primary. If nothing else, council should ensure that the city remains fiscally sound. Yeah, we've seen examples of cities that have gone bankrupt. It's not a good, not a good look. So the current city plan is well on its way to completion. And we've heard tonight with the Quest Center, that was from, the idea to getting the DDA to almost two and a half years. Similarly, with other places, other parts of the current city plan. The costs of developing and implementing that plan were accounted for in the past, and they're accounted for in future city budgets. The November initiative is a set of zoning changes, and it has no proposed means of implementing those changes. Should that initiative pass, its zoning changes would effectively require starting from scratch to redesign the space, but the city budget does not cover those costs. And so it would fall to council to determine how to pay for determining the extra costs. We've heard some talk this evening about the possibility of a parcel tax. I mean, I'm not eager to have one, frankly. We do not really want to recommend this course of action, because everybody's got better uses for their money. I can think of lots of ways that are better used for that money, including some of the issues we've heard tonight: climate change, taking care of affordable housing and homelessness, the list goes on. That's personal use and city's use. But also, it's the time and money it would cost, our already, time and effort it would cost our already overburdened staff. So we need to make sure that we're fiscally sound as a city. Again, we would prefer not to go bankrupt. It's not a good look, as I've said. But we do not recommend going forward with planning any parcel tax initiative immediately. We'd like to sort of hold on that, reconsider, see where we stand sometime in late April. And with that, and before we conclude, I think I'm going to turn it back over to Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good summary of where we're at. We've actually thought of, you know, over the course of the, maybe a half a dozen different initiatives, but they all fall into the category of zoning or finance. And as was said, that zoning by initiative is really a bad idea. So we're not intending to go there, but we'll see how things evolve. But just thinking about the financial needs here, that it's prudent and responsible for the council to think about it and be prepared for it. And as was said, there is no mechanism currently in the initiative to pay for any of the extra costs. But the extra costs are, there are several. I mean, there's an extra parking garage that we don't need. There's moving streets. There's, as we heard, the hotel that was proposed would need subsidies for parking a park. There's the potential loss of the housing funds that have been awarded to Eden Housing by the county. That's fourteen million right there. There's the potential loss of the affordable housing... million right there. There's the potential loss of the affordable housing credits for using the land, because, and I think in the initiative, they cross out the word affordable. And then, because of the recent law, SB 330 in particular, the initiative that's on the ballot looks to be in conflict, and so there's going to be inevitable lawsuits. So just given that list of items, and what I can estimate they would cost, we're talking 35 to 50 million dollar pressure. So given that, we'll need to figure out what to do here, because if the citizens are really interested in enacting that zoning and doing more than just blocking the city plan, but actually want to have something happen, we're gonna have to figure out how to pay for it. So I would like to ask staff a few questions. Councilmember Monroe alluded to it, but the last date for the council putting something on the November ballot is sometime in August. Is that right?
Yes, it's 88 days prior to the election.
When? Is it beginning of August?
Counting backwards, yes, roughly the beginning of August.
Beginning of August. So then, the next question is, if the council were to actually undertake putting an initiative on there along these lines, that's a fairly substantial undertaking. So if we were to get to the August deadline, and we wouldn't want to come right up to it, when would council really need to begin seriously consideration of this item? I'll just put out there, maybe in June, no, later than June?
Yeah, your timing has previously been when you placed items on the ballot, to start about 60 to 75 days prior to the deadline, in order to get the wording of what you'd like to have, and then also all of your arguments.
So in June, beginning of June kind of timeframe. And frankly, this kind of thing is not something that the council has done in a long time. I know, many years ago, when Mayor Marshawn and I were in the council, we did two initiatives that we got on the ballot and they passed, but they were fairly straightforward, and it was in particular limiting the council's compensation and benefits. So that wasn't hard to get your mind around. This is much more complex. So if we were actually going to have the council do something serious beginning in June, I think there would be a time when we would want to educate the Subcommittee here on some of the mechanics and the thoughts. And what would be a good time for that? Sometime in the beginning of May, perhaps?
One of the questions has to do with the nature of the initiative itself. If it ultimately has a land use component, you will need to complete SEQA as a part of your analysis in there. And so if it's a land use initiative, we would need to begin before that, likely late March, early April at the very latest. If it's a revenue measure, you have a little bit more time, at least technically, on that. So certainly no later than May.
Okay. So what Councilmember Monroe said is, we don't want to, you know, spin staff up unnecessarily, because you're overburdened as it is. And I would just say that we've got a month or two to think about this. And so what I would request is that maybe you prepare something to educate Councilmember Monroe and I on this, so we can begin to grapple with it, so then we can bring to the other council members. And I would say, we have the referendum coming up in beginning of March, but independent of that, I think we're still looking at an initiative in November. I think the current initiative, because it's in conflict with state law, has a good chance of being pulled, frankly. Just guess. And then I would guess that maybe there's a substitute initiative that would be, try to put forward. So there's a lot of potential moving parts here. And the one, two things I just mentioned will take time to unfold. And it would be nice if we didn't have to worry about this. But I would suggest that the mechanism be, maybe some briefings for Councilmember Monroe and I, and then, starting sometime late March, just to, for you to explain to us what we're really talking about, and that we can make some reasonable arrangements with you for how much work it would be, and what we're looking at. And maybe by that time, we'll have some clarity on what's going on. Does that make sense to you?
I would ask, what's, if we wanted to be briefed, I'm thinking that late March might be a little on the early side. What's the latest you'd recommend going if we needed a briefing to make this a possibility, assuming we went forward with it? Could we wait as late as the middle of April?
We wouldn't push it much beyond that until we had an idea of the nature of what you were trying to place on the ballot.
Okay.
To make sure that we had adequate time for the necessary steps, especially if some of it involves, something that would require environmental.
Yeah, so I would recommend we push it.
Right. The only point I'm making is, we want to make it as late as possible, but that's why I wanted to explore the timelines. It is a complex process, and we'll need the whole council to weigh in on it, think about it. We're not gonna do something like this, you know, just on the spur of the moment. So I would, I guess the final request I have at this point is to get guidance from staff as to what the schedule needs to be for us to interact with them, so that we're not doing something, some kind of crash course here. So that's, so I just, I don't know what that date is, but my request is that staff come back with a plan for how we might most efficiently address this without spinning you up unnecessarily.
We could bring back a schedule to the Subcommittee.
That's basically the bottom line. So we don't know what needs to be done, but as I said, what we're trying to do is be prudent and responsible. And I don't see that we have any real choice.
Okay, further comments at this point? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment period. Elizabeth Judge, Jean King, Richard Ryan.
Well, good evening again. When I looked at the agenda tonight, I saw an initiative. I didn't see anything about a parcel tax. The only thing I've seen about a parcel tax is what's been coming in the mail and some flyers to scare everybody, ranging from 23 million to 40 million or whatever. But I don't need to discuss that this evening, because I'm not prepared to do that. In seeing the initiative, a possible city initiative on the agenda, I first thought, oh gee, some cities do this in order to confuse voters when it comes time to voting, so that they would have more than one initiative to deal with. And then I thought, now, don't be so negative. And then I had a dream thought that maybe people coming up with this initiative would actually do it in good faith and try to come up with maybe a compromise, so that when November is over, things wouldn't have to be redrawn or whatever, that things might be nailed down a little bit. But I'm not clear on what the actual intent is here, and I wish that the agenda might have been a little more detailed as to what was going to be discussed. And since I wasn't sure, and since it's kind of wide open, I might want to throw in just an idea that I had a couple of years ago, which was a little too premature. And that is, when you're worrying about construction and parking and so forth, maybe a circulating bus, or a trolley or whatever that goes all over town, just on a circulating basis, like from noon until nine or something like that. And it doesn't have to be free, but it might help out a whole lot. And that's really all I can think of to offer this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean King, Richard Ryan, Carl Winty.
Hi, excuse me, good evening. The voters of Livermore signed petitions last summer to qualify an initiative, so there could be a vote on the Central Park Plan for the downtown. Ever since it qualified for a vote, there have been constant efforts to sabotage that vote, with a hotel development agreement, misleading statements concerning past and defeated state legislation, incorrect statements about the cost of the plan, and personal attacks on supporters of the plan. Recent mailers and talk of a parcel tax and additional initiatives are yet another attempt to mislead, confuse, and scare the public, and stop the central plan from being implemented if it is approved by the voters. Please stop these tactics, so there can be a meaningful vote on the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Richard Ryan, Carl Winty, Tamara Royce.
You know, the agenda item was rather vague, so I prepared some comments, which I've basically stricken much of. But, you know, it was rumored that you would be bringing up a parcel tax to pay for the difference in, between the approved city plan and the alternate plan being proposed by some of us. I think that this is an attempt to bribe or bully the people of Livermore into voting yes on Measure P rather than no. At the January 27th meeting of the City Council, I testified that the Wildan Financial Services Company of Oakland estimated that the alternative plan that we have to the city's downtown plan would produce $15 million more than the city plan over a period of 30 years. So that makes the alternate plan much more fiscally responsible. I would not, you know, I, at the end of my comments, I appended that full report and handed it to the city clerk. I don't know if you've seen that or not, but I certainly encourage you to take a look at it, because it would be derelict if you don't consider all alternative financial reports. And here's an alternative for you. So I certainly urge you to take a look at that report, and if you need it, I can supply it again. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Ryan. Carl Winty, Tamara Royce, Jeff Caskey.
Carl Winty, just outside of town. Mr. Mayor, council, staff, thank you all for being awesome. Thanks to those that serve and protect and put on a bulletproof vest to go to work. I'm speaking on behalf of three millennial cousins that I have that are living in the town of Livermore. I'm so happy to have them come back and work with us as an ongoing family business. And on behalf of them, plus the plethora of music friends that I have, many of whom are schoolteachers, on behalf of them, cost to our generation is so very, 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 very important. Notwithstanding where it came in on the ranking of the issues on the outreach, it wasn't as high as I think it could or should have been, but it is important to my generation that live in town that we talk about. So I'd like to reiterate what the previous speaker said, that if you guys, you all, you people, I apologize, you gentlemen and lady, don't take the cost, the revenue, the upkeep, the maintenance, all of this, if you don't take that into account, that is indeed dereliction of duty. But I have confidence that you will, right? We have a plan. We have other people that are putting drawings forward, and that are saying we want different things. If there's any changes from the plan that's been agreed upon, you will be a dereliction of duty if you're not telling us what the financial impact is. So that's all. And these are the people I trust most as it relates to this. I know they do their research out there to see, and they come back with us, because cost does matter. Cost, revenue, the entire thing. So I speak on behalf of those folks. I have read the plan. I have read that $15.03 million. I don't think it takes everything into account, that you need to take into account to weigh such issues as this. So I know you won't be in dereliction of your duty, because I know you will give this the due that it needs, because my generation does not want to have undue taxes, undue burden upon us going forward. Thank you for what you do.
Thanks, Mr. Winty. Tamara Royce, Jeff Caskey, Michael Ferrucci.
A parcel tax is not needed to implement the Central Park Plan. It is an abuse of power for the city council to mention a parcel tax tonight without providing any details to the public in advance. With the Measure P vote only a few weeks away, threatening a parcel tax measure misinforms voters, many of whom are already completing their ballots. The city has not even revealed the amounts it will be spending for the city plan. This makes a full comparison of the financial impacts of each plan impossible at this time. The public should be aware of the following. First, the Central Park Plan will generate 1.2 million per year in taxes and fees, according to the study prepared by Wildan Financial Services. Wildan took into account the fact that the Central Park Plan provides a full-service West Side Hotel, 160 rooms with a high room rate, restaurant, parking fees, and also additional retail. It would contribute over 35 million in 30 years to the city's general fund, more than enough to cover added costs in the Central Park Plan. Second, in order to provide parking near Livermore Avenue where it is badly needed, the Central Park Plan places the same number of stalls in three garages that the city plan places in two. Because of this variation, the annual, the additional expense is 2.5 million, not 23 million, as has been speculated. The 1.2 million annual increase in city revenue will readily offset the 2.5 million cost. Third, some have said that the proposed parcel tax is needed to help with residential development financing if the Central Park Plan is approved. Eden Housing has been awarded 14 million from Alameda County for its 130-unit affordable housing project. However, if the 130 units were built north of Railroad Avenue instead, Eden could still secure the county's 14 million. The area could accommodate even more units than originally proposed, and exceed the county's funding criteria. No need for a parcel tax. And last, the 4 million in any remaining affordable housing obligation could be addressed by upzoning other land for affordable housing, such as the area north of Railroad. Any portion of the obligation that is not covered by the 84 units in the Central Park Plan can be met by adding 46 or more units there. The city's stockman agreement relocated a portion of its proposed housing to Pacific Avenue, still benefiting the Affordable Housing Fund. The city can use the same strategy for the Central Park Plan. Of course, if Measure P passes, it will fix the hotel location on the east side of Livermore Avenue, in direct conflict with the Central Park Plan, which provides a higher-quality West Side Hotel, a better park, and better parking. Is the city council so afraid that Measure P will be defeated this March, that it is rushing into a discussion now of an unwarranted parcel tax for November? This appears to be the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Caskey, Michael Ferrucci, Ian Carlin.
Hi, Jeff Caskey, 585 South K Street. Good evening, all. Mr. Ryan said that it was rumored that a parcel tax would come up tonight. Actually, it wasn't rumored, it was printed. It was printed in a flyer that came out. That flyer was paid for by Yeson P, sponsored by Presidio Company. That would be the company that's going to, of course, benefit from Measure P. The billion-dollar developer, whose bullet item here is keep big money out of local elections. So perhaps he's trying to keep himself out of the elections. But, but the notion of a parcel tax is written up in three large paragraphs about a $40 million parcel tax. So it's interesting that he seems to have been well-informed about them, but the public and the rest of us don't know much about it. So I was just curious about how it was that the developer already has us out there with a parcel tax. It's an interesting conundrum for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caskey. Michael Ferrucci, Ian Carlin.
Michael Ferrucci, 508 South Livermore Avenue. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to say that I agree with the previous two speakers, so I won't repeat what they had to say. I've written letters to the editor, and I've gotten responses. I've gotten phone calls, and even people at church have asked me, why am I opposed to Measure P? And so I realize that a lot of these people don't have any idea of what's going on in terms of, they don't read staff reports, they don't come to city council meetings, but they do realize that every two weeks, the council meets and makes decisions that affects the lives of everyone that live here in Livermore. After speaking to them, I don't go into details about these issues. I just tell them that I want to be able to make a decision in November. I want to make the decision I want to make the decision in March. I want to vote no, and I convince them, or I attempt to convince them, that it's okay to vote no on Measure P and wait until November to vote on the initiative. Then you guys can do your job. At that, well, actually, it depends on if you're still here. It saddens me to hear the rhetoric going back and forth, that there's a city plan and then there's a residence plan. We're all residents here, hopefully. The people that are supporting or opposing are residents of Livermore. I don't give as much credence to those people that are outside of Livermore. With all due respect to my friend Carl, who's been sitting next to me the whole time, we are good friends. And I'm good friends with a lot of people that are Yes On P, but they're at least willing to consider and listen to why it's so important that as residents, we can make that decision in November. The stuff that's going on on Nextdoor, I've learned my lesson. I've only made one post on Nextdoor. I occasionally will look at it, but to see the venom that's coming out of people is really disturbing. And so I agree with you. We're better than that in terms, I saw you the other day, John, on North Livermore Avenue across from Strang's fixing signs, and you might have even fixed a No On P sign. And I've seen you do it before, so I commend you for doing that and being able to handle it. The accusations that people are destroying signs, there's no evidence of that, is there? Are there any arrests? Are there any convictions? So no, this is all accusations. I mean, I hear people saying that it's the Yes On P people making those destroying signs. Clever, what can I say? Yellow signs for No On P, I want to say that's a caution signal. We need to be careful what we do, and let's wait until November to make that decision. I'm ready to compare and decide in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrucci. Ian Carlin.
So first, I just want to echo what Carl said. He hit it spot on. We need to know what the cost is because they're not telling us what the cost is. We've asked people timelines. We've asked people to give dollars, and everyone but the city has basically said, well, blah, blah, blah. And they've dumped millions of dollars into this. And yes, you can pick on the developer for dumping probably what is $50,000 at this point in, but people who live outside of town, Joan Sepola, for example, have dumped way more than that over many years. And so to pick on one is to be choosing what you are. And then the other thing that really strikes me is we have someone saying, oh, let's just push all the affordable housing people on the other side of Railroad. Because, well, that's not class warfare or anything. We shouldn't devalue people because they don't have money. I want the homeless to be housed. I want people to have affordable housing. That's a step towards it. But to push them off to the sidelines, to use the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as a loan so that they can eventually do their project, pet project, that's reprehensible. That is not the way that money is supposed to be treated. And if you want to know if there will be lawsuits, there will be lawsuits. And what will probably happen is the whole thing will fall apart, and if you thought the Lennar Plan had a lot of housing, depending upon what state laws get passed, there could be a lot more. The City Council needs to move forward. This is a compromise plan. Just because one group out of about the 10 or 20 or 30 groups that you've surveyed does not support it, does not mean it's not a compromise. Sometimes, some people just aren't willing to compromise, and we just have to move on with life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Okay, that's it for the cars I have. I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council, comments from the council. Customer Carlin?
Let's see. So the last two meetings, I've mentioned this again. I appreciate you paying for this financial services company, but this is not a hard calculation to make, and you can, again, like I said last week, there are a few constants here. One is the number of rooms, which is 160, the number of days in a year, the TOT tax, which is 8%, and 30 years. The only two variables are the room rate and the occupancy rate. And you can end up with any profit you want over 30 years. This doesn't take magic to figure this out or to come up with $15.04 million. Again, I'm impressed as a scientist that you've come up with four significant digits for something that's completely imagined in terms of the cost and the occupancy rate. Somebody mentioned about misleading statements. We got a phone call. I got one at my landline, and my wife got one a few minutes later on her cellphone, asking us to vote in March about one plan versus another. I said, that's not what it's about. And he insisted it was, and I said, no, it's about a hotel. Well, it's a little bit about a hotel. No, I said, that's exactly what it is. So don't accuse us of misleading the public when the No On P people are paying people to make phone calls and to knock on people's doors because a friend of mine also had somebody come to their door and spew the same stuff, to mislead the public in terms of what the vote in March is about. The vote in the March is about a hotel yes or a hotel no. That's what it's about. It's not one plan versus a drawing or another plan. It's only about a hotel. A hotel yes to follow our development agreement and approve our development agreement that we approved in July or not. That's all it's about. And to ask people to make phone calls to the public, to the residents of this community, and mislead in that way, I think is just flat-out wrong. Yeah, there's been plenty of evidence of people destroying signs. I mean, how many signs have you seen that have been cut in half? I guess he left. So, I mean, I've picked them up and repaired them and put them back out. So yes, there's plenty of evidence of people destroying signs. We even saw evidence of people vandalizing signs in the last council election. So this is not the first time that this has happened in this community, and I think we all should take stock of that because that's not the right way to approach any sort of a free election. I agree with Mr. Carlin. I think moving, asking us to move housing north of Railroad is offensive. We've had this discussion before. I mean, at one point, the folks that are opposed to the city plan wanted to put housing out by the railroad tracks where we're going to put the I Street Garage. And I told those folks then, and I agree, and I haven't changed my mind, I find that offensive, to expect to put affordable housing or even low-income housing away from the city's center just because we don't want to see them. And I think you remember that somebody stood before us and was worried about laundry and blue tarps being hung by apartment buildings in the downtown area. And again, I find that very offensive. So I'm very much in favor of the 130 affordable housing units and the $14 million that Eden Housing earned through a competitive process. And to suggest that they can all pick up and move north of Railroad, I think, is just the height of hypocrisy. I just find it extremely troubling. I don't know anything about a parcel tax. So again, the innuendo that you haven't been informed about it, well, it's news to me. I mean, I think this is, I mean, we have to figure out how we're going to pay for some of this stuff if the vote goes against the hotel in March and the rezoning in November. And to suggest that things can be built at the same schedule as the city is, again, flat-out wrong. Yeah, you can build a hotel in the same period of time, but the question is, when do you Because we have no hotelier for Railroad and El. We have no design, nothing. We have no parking for that. So yeah, you can build a hotel there, or you could build a hotel next to the bankhead in the same period of time, two years maybe. When do you start? We're ready to start as soon as the yes vote succeeds in March. Otherwise, we wait, and we wait, and we wait. So I'm ready to move on. And I think the rest of, at least the folks that I've spoken with over the last few weeks are ready to move on as well.
Right down the line here, customer Coomer.
We'll start this way, and you know, I hardly know where to start because as I hear people speaking to a parcel tax, I'm looking at 601 and I'm saying, where the hell did that come from? I have no idea what that's coming from, but it's not coming from this council at this point right now. So I don't know. These ideas ferment somewhere, and we get to hear about them, but God, I just, I keep thinking, hearing all these things. Sabotaging the initiative vote was another thing I heard. Didn't the referendum do that? And it wasn't our referendum. I mean, we just let the hotel get built. Wouldn't have the referendum, the initiative vote would go on, and you know, we'd do all these things. However, you got us both of them. So now we're looking at two votes, and that isn't our doing. We approved a plan. We talked and argued about elements of the plan. We listened to the community. We listened to the steering committee, and we, out of that, we got people who were just too bent on getting their own way. And that's disturbing to me. It's, I don't know how you can sabotage an initiative vote because with another vote that you also created, you know, that didn't come from us. It just, it's frightening to think about that. We're talking about speculative income from a speculative, non-existent hotel from a non-existent developer. You know, that's great, you know? I used to love Greek mythology, and this is, you know, this is kind of going back to third and fourth grade right here, listening to some of this stuff because it's right out of thin air. This stuff is made up. It isn't without the studies and the information provided by thousands of hours of staff work, of us up here arguing about which elements should go where, you know, for quite a while we did that, me being the dissenter in most of those situations. And yet, we need, the fact is, for the business community, for the winery community, we need to move forward with it. We need to, we stop putting it off. We need to stop putting obstructions in the way. Because there's just not an incredibly, when you look at, you know, you think, you talk about a parcel tax needing for something like that, why we're back to parcel taxes. Let's go back to moving Veterans Way, which is, what, a year old, 11 feet north. Have you factored in the cost of that when you factor in the revenues, that you're all this great money that we're going to produce over 30 years? You know, nobody thinks of that. That never comes up. That's not a cheap endeavor, you know? Imagine moving a street. Well, you got to see it when they moved First Street down to where it is now. So it's annoying to me, quite honestly, that we have to even talk about it. But I, most of all, want to say that we kept hearing all along during the initiative process about the democratic process, except only one side apparently is not able to use the initiative process because we just got called out for that, too. Because if we were able to happen to do that, then, you know, all of a sudden, we're obstructing the initiative vote. Well, it doesn't work that way. Everything has checks and balances, and there are moves and counter-moves. A lot of things to be done. I'm not looking forward to the city taking any initiative action and moving forward with something like that. But I'll tell you what, I'm not interested in the city spending any more city money on redoing the entire downtown. We argued about it. We fought each other about it, and we came up with a plan.
You mentioned mythology. Of course, it reminds me of the myth of Sisyphus and rolling the rock to the top of the hill. Yeah, I thought so. Saw the image on that one. Councilmember Monroe.
Right. So, look, there were two areas that we considered. One was the zoning. And again, you know, the idea of zoning by initiative, whether in whatever form, is not a great idea. That's all we're saying. We're saying that from our standpoint. I'm also a real believer, and the more I look at this, you know, what this job encompasses, the more it comes down to, what are you willing to pay for? What you are willing to pay for says who you are. If we, we only have, as individuals and as a city, limited amounts of money. How we spend that money matters. I have no desire to have a parcel tax that would redo the downtown. But the fact of the matter is, if we have to redo the downtown, it will cost money. You know, that's the reality. I do like the real world, and we'd have to figure out a way to pay for it. I desperately don't want to do that because we have better uses for our money, for all of our money. I'm going to talk a little bit in my report out about how the state is thinking about housing and funding housing. And again, it's a matter of how we think about money and how we use that money we have and how we think about our collective money. That's all that this is, what we're really talking about. I wanted to really give a shout-out to Elizabeth Judge. I love the idea of doing a circulating bus or trolley. It is a wonderful way to think about getting other people to, you know, having other modes of transportation. I really want to thank you for bringing that up. It's, you know, as we're thinking about how to solve transportation problems in downtown, that certainly should be in the mix, and thank you.
Okay, go for it. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts here. What we started with is just what Councilmember Monroe and the other ones have mentioned is, you don't get something like this for free, and we have to be professional and responsible. And I'm a trained financial analyst, and the best thing I can say about this study that you paid for is highly speculative. My real word for it is bogus. It's just not there. You can, as Councilmember Carlin said, you can put anything into that. It's a very simple calculation. I've done it myself, and, you know, the extra room rates that you need, the occupancy rates, none of it makes any sense, not founded in any basis. It's just you plug the number in and you get the number you want. And I'll also say, in my experience over the years, whenever I wanted to look credible on something that I knew it was just a swag, I put in all kinds of extra digits because people say, oh, he must know what he's doing. And it was on purpose. So something that is so speculative and unfounded, 15.04, you know that's laughable. There's nothing that would give you that. And that's, all it is, is an attempt to make you believe it's credible when in fact it's not. So there's that. The other thing I want to do is bring this back to what we're talking about. Being prudent and responsible means we have to plan to do something, and we have to do it deliberately, and something like this takes time. And you saw the schedule that we put out there. You have to back up for when it would happen. So we want to do it well, and we would do it in a public process. And we would evaluate what exactly has to go in, what's not, and it will depend on what happens. But I want to say, this isn't really about Measure P because Measure P, whether it passes or not, only changes the magnitude of what we're talking about. It doesn't put it to zero. And given that the initiative is still on the ballot, we have to plan for it. Because if we didn't plan for it, we didn't consider how to pay for it, then we would be in this very bad situation where people were led to believe they were getting something when in fact there was no way to ever get it. So we have to say, look, if you're really serious about this, it is going to cost money. We don't know how much now, but it's tens of millions. And we got to figure it out, and we're going to have to figure out how to pay for it, and we're going to have to do this in a very careful, deliberative, open process. And we're going to have to start sometime in the April, beginning of May timeframe in order to do this well. That's all we're saying. We don't know what the number is, but all we were doing tonight was saying, we have two options, planning by a two options, planning by, you know, doing zoning by initiative, which we think is really wrong. And so, we're not going to enter into that." And the other one is, how do you pay for something? If you want it, you got to have to pay for it. It's not free. I mean, look at all of the conversation we have here about our assets that need maintaining, the homelessness, the whole thing that we have to deal with. We don't have spare change sitting around here to just, somebody says a whim, and they want to rezone, and we don't have that. So, we're going to have to pay for it. And that's all this is. And it's just a preliminary conversation about setting up the process to evaluate what should be done in a very public way. That's all it is. So, getting all spun up about it now, and coming up with things out of the thin air and all of these things, it's just misleading. This is just simply, we have to be prudent and start the process. And we're asking staff, because we know it's complex, to tell us what's the right approach. That's all we're talking about tonight.
Okay. So, going back to the bus, the, a couple of the buses that do run in this area operate on an eighty-two to a ninety-two percent subsidy. So, it comes back to, where's the money come from? You got to have the money to subsidize that. And there's a town just over the hill has a ninety-two percent subsidy on their downtown bus. So, you have to find a way, a mechanism to pay for that. The, interesting thing, but that figures, because when we did our outreach, and did that, that months-long process, and we prioritized everything in the downtown. Number one, number one was parking. Number two, protecting town character, like Blacksmith Square. Number three was the park space. Number five was the hotel. Remember what nine was? Number nine was financial sustainability. Well, for those of us up here, financial sustainability really is, that's pretty close to the top. Now, we can look at all the other stuff, but financial sustainability is, is very, very important. And that's, that's why we have this conversation, is we've got to pay for the infrastructure. If, if it's zoned, if the zoning changes, and we have to move things around, that's very expensive. The, it's interesting, the comment tonight about, "Oh, you can just move the housing north of Railroad and reapply for the funds." I called Eden Housing and asked them about that, talked to the Supervisors Office about that. And their conclusion was, we would lose it. We would lose the fourteen million dollars, because there's a whole line of other projects waiting in line for that fourteen million dollars. And they were quite convinced that if we reapplied for that money, it's gone. Fourteen million bucks. The, again, that financial report, it was revealed at the last meeting that the hotel doesn't have any parking on-site. And it appears that they're requiring the city to build and subsidize the parking for them, because there is no place for any parking anywhere around the hotel, even though we're being told that the parking for the hotel is more convenient. Well, it appears that the hotel is going to be using the L Street Garage, a block away. And what was, what was also interesting tonight is, one of the speakers talked about the parking fees. Well, it is, it sounds like that somebody else has negotiated parking fees that would be paid to the city. And the question that I have is, by what authority did the Central Park Group negotiate parking fees on behalf of the city? I, I don't know. But yet, apparently, I heard mentioned that there are parking fees that had been negotiated. But apparently, they're, they're tapping into the general fund of the city. One of the, the rallying cries of a, of a recent election, two thousand sixteen, "Don't Dublinize our downtown." That was the rallying cry in two thousand sixteen. And yet, when you look at Dublin, that's what happens when you zone by, by the ballot box. It was in the early nineties. I was on the Zone Seven Water Board. And they, there was the East County Area Plan, and there was the plan on, on East Dublin. And that went to the ballot box. That's where they rezoned East Dublin. And that's what happens when you rely on the ballot box to do your zoning. And what we're looking at with this upcoming initiative, to say, "Don't Dublinize our downtown," but yet, this initiative proposes to increase, to triple the densities in the downtown to one hundred fifty units to the acre. That's, that's three times the densities in Dublin. And yet, the initiative is going to put that into our downtown, one hundred fifty units to the acre. And, and we've got to figure out how we're going to pay for all this, how we're going to pay for a fourth parking garage, moving the Veterans Way. So, we're the ones that are up here that have to figure out the financial sustainability of any zoning in any plan. So, that's why we have to start this conversation early, is because we're the ones that are going to be held responsible. If, if, if the downtown goes south because of an initiative, who's held responsible? It's not what the City Council voted for. The City Council voted for a plan. If this drawing becomes the law of the land, and that doesn't work, who do they hold responsible? The voters are going to be held responsible. Well, the voters are going to try to hold us responsible, but it's not us that created this. It's the same group that negotiated the parking fees. And again, by what authority? So, this is why we're talking about initiatives, is we're the ones up here that are going to be responsible for paying for this, regardless of whether this go, what happens at the ballot box. We are the elected representatives that have to make this work. That's why we have to have this discussion tonight. And this is going to be an ongoing discussion, absolutely. But you're looking at the five people that are responsible for the financial sustainability of this, of the city. And we take that responsibility very, very seriously. But we have to plan. Because if you, if you fail to plan, your plan to fail. So, going back to staff, do you have sufficient direction from the committee?
So, we'll be looking with the council's concurrence here to work with the subcommittee to lay out the schedules for various activities for the November ballot.
Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, that concludes that item. Onto seven point oh one. It's, pardon me?
Did you have, did you get the?
Yeah.
Do you have the concurrence? Do we need to do anything?
Okay, seven point oh one, matters initiated and council reports.
Oh, only a couple of reports. Unfortunately, my ability to get out and do things isn't as great as it used to be. So, I've got one lab to board meeting, and one lab to finance and administration committee meeting. And we discussed, the CAFR is my most, my favorite time of year, we look over the comprehensive financial reporting.
Yep.
My announcement I wanted to make tonight, just personally, is that due to these issues that keep me from doing so many public things now, and traveling over to Stanford as often as I am doing, I am not going to seek reelection for a second term. I am just going to be too busy with trying to find a new kidney, and that's, life goes in certain directions. And we'll just take it from here and finish out the year strong.
Well, I wish the very best as you go forward in the search.
Can't get any worse.
Yeah. You know?
Quote Sherry Sheets on that. He's never so bad that he can't get worse. So, careful what you invoke.
Exactly. So, the last couple of weeks have been largely, for me, they've largely been around homelessness and affordable housing, with a little bit of the arts thrown in. So, on January twenty-ninth, I attended an Everyone Home Meeting for Alameda County. And this is a group that looks at developing solutions for homelessness across the county. Very interesting group. It was, it's interesting for me, particularly because there was, there's a, looking at homelessness as a national problem, you see one lens. And so, that is homelessness as particularly shaped by structural racism, which is absolutely the case. But, but when you look at different communities, even within the Bay Area, what you find is that each community has very different populations of homeless, and that the approach is different within each, within each, each district, in terms of finding the solutions. A couple of particular, let's see, the, the big takeaway is place matters, maintaining community matters, and finding ways to create community for those who are unsheltered, within the places that they view as community. Turns out to be paramount, regardless of who you are. So, I look forward to more of those meetings. I attended the LCA meeting on February fifth, and it looks like that organization is looking to do some structural, or consider some, some structural changes going forward. So, we'll see how that goes. It was quite interesting. And then, two meetings concerning the housing going forward. One, on January thirtieth, attended the League of California Cities East Bay Division meeting legislative concerns on housing in particular. And then, on February seventh, I attended the ABAG General Assembly, the first meeting. And so, I'm going to talk a little bit about those together. The first one was with Senator Glazers, Wykowski, and Weiner. And it was a discussion of SB fifty, and what had worked and what hadn't worked with it. The, the general consent, it's very clear that housing is and will continue to be a focus of the state legislature, legislature going forward. Senator Weiner will continue to press for his version of housing bills, and he's got a good point. I don't agree with the particular way that he approaches it. But hey, housing is necessary. I'll talk a little bit about that, that, you know, which leads into the ABAG meeting. So, the, okay, so, this is the Association of Bay Area Governments. So, all the hundred and one, hundred and ten, hundred-plus cities in the Bay Area send representatives, all the supervisors send representatives. And one of the primary things that this does is to look at RENA numbers. Now, hang on a minute, let me get my notes. So, RENA numbers come from a nineteen sixty-nine law that requires that we plan to meet the needs of all. This comes as a result of, frankly, segregation in underserved communities. So, where we plan for those we want to plan for, but don't plan for the rest of us. So, the state identifies the total number of units across income groups for the region, and then the regions distribute the, that to the different cities. And every eight years, that's reset. We're coming up to that process right now. And so, this was a presentation on how ABAG was going to work with the cities to make that happen. And ideally, to make it fairer. So, it'll be a two-year process. It's going to include public comment along the way, pay attention as this comes forward. We'll be able to learn from places in the other, other state regions. We're a little bit later than some of those, those regions. And as, as we go forward, we need to be aware that the RENA numbers, those, the amount of housing we'll be responsible for, will go up. It's going to go up for everybody. The figure they were talking about was three times what it is right now. So, we have a couple choices with that. We can complain and say, "God damn the state, putting stuff on us. How dare they?" Or, we can be intentional about how we build our communities and how we think about going forward to create housing for all. State has some resources, never enough resources. ABAG has some resources, and the Council of Governments will have some resources. So, again, this is something that we're working on as, as we go forward. As I mentioned, that was part of what ABAG did. The other piece was a discussion by Senators Weiner, he gets around, Chu, and Bell. And in particular, Senator Bell talked about collaborating, both Senators Bell and Chu talked about creating an ongoing source of funding, that you're never going to have affordable housing for everybody unless you create a source. You can't do it without subsidizing it. And that we, as a state, need to be thinking about how we fund, how we fund this going forward. I was delighted to hear this, because collaborating really is important. So, that, again, I am looking forward to working with, not in opposition to the state. I'm looking forward to seeing, working with, and not in opposition to the residents of the community, as we go forward in some integrated way. And I think that that's something I really want to see us all looking at. There's sort of an inclination that at every level, we gripe about the next level up. If we're an individual, we're going to gripe about the city. And the city restricts what you can and cannot do, unless, of course, the city is not restricting what my neighbor can and cannot do, because my neighbor has, okay, my personal pet peeve, the barking dog, that the city will not stop from barking. I know, not a huge problem in my life. So, there's, there's an expectation that I'm going to get what I need from the city. Same thing, cities expect that the state is going to give what they need and stay out of their business when they don't. And I would like us all to think about how we work together in collaboration, so that we actually get what we all need. And I'm going to close with, "And money does matter."
About the, the housing, that the, that ABAG, the RENA numbers, and of course, I keep going back to water. And they just finished the Calaveras Dam, which cost twice as much to build, and it took twice as long to build. So, if they're going to be talking about adding three and a half million more housing units, it's going to be at least twenty years before the new water's in place. So, they're going to start planning now.
And as we go forward with climate action, we can start thinking about ways that we can conserve and use water more effectively. Last night, I was at a discussion at my synagogue on how Israel is using water in terms of water, how the little pipes, the--
Desalination.
No, not desalinization. That's what's part of it. Actually, they were talking about how in Mumbai, there are ways of pulling water out of the air. And I think there's only folks where it's humid.
Yeah, they just pull the humidity out.
Right. So, it's not just how much water's available, it's how we use, and use creatively the water we have.
Water flows uphill to money. Councilor Carling?
Thank you. Only one meeting I went to was with Councilmember Monroe, League of California Cities meeting on the thirtieth, where Senator Glazer and Wykowski were there to talk about housing. I also wanted to call out the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department. A friend of ours' young son had a medical emergency recently, and I talked to his mom. I mean, it turns out, he's fine. But, but this was on the playground, and the fire department showed up, and not only took care of his immediate medical needs, but it was also sensitive to providing some privacy during that particular period of time, from a bunch of, probably, as you might expect, gawking kids trying to figure out what was going on. And I know that she certainly appreciated not only the attention that he got during this particular point in time, but also the sensitivity that LPFD showed in maintaining some privacy around, while they were dealing with the medical emergency for this young man. So, I think we all take, you know, grant, for granted, those resources, not only the police department, but the fire department and other emergency services that we have in our city. But when something like that happens, and you hear from a mom or a dad, it brings it to my attention. I want to make sure that everybody knows, also in the community, that we have people out there to look out, look out for us, and are there to take care of us in our time of emergency. So, thank you.
Very good. Have I smear? Mike Smear?
Been to a couple of WILLS board meetings. And a couple of things I'll say is that they've got more statistics showing how spectacularly well WILLS is doing in increasing ridership compared to all the other transit areas around here that are losing. So, it's done a lot of things, and it's being sustained for a long period of time. So, that's very good news. And the other thing is making good progress on the autonomous vehicle for delivering people to the BART station, sort of going, getting through the permits and going along there. So, that was good. The other thing I'll mention with respect to, it's not quite a matters initiated, but I wanted to call it out, is that all the council members received a letter from Steve Goodman, who's been very active in public office as an LARP board member for many years, put out a lot of signs. And I'll quote to say, this is what he says, "To say that I am outraged by the current sign situation occurring with Measure P, signs would be a gross understatement." He goes on to say, "Signs that I personally placed have been removed and vandalized not once, but multiple times. Even the replacement signs were vandalized and removed. Many of them cut into pieces and left as litter. This is unacceptable. To disagree with a position or issue is part of the democratic process, but the willful acts of vandalism are not." So, the previous speaker who said there was no evidence is being just disingenuous. There's a lot of evidence. And I've personally been involved in it myself. So, what Steve goes on to say is, "I therefore ask that you seriously consider enacting a policy." And he goes on to say, San Ramon and Dublin. And I think that's another serious step. And all I wanted to say is, I think this letter does deserve some attention. And I will be asking staff a few questions, but I'm not going to ask them at this point to do anything. But I do want to understand what the options are. So, I just wanted to say I'll be asking and trying to understand what can be done.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, first off, Councilman Rukumber, get well. That's the most important thing. Certainly appreciate the great work that you've done here, and that you've taken the time to step up and serve this community. I sincerely thank you for that. So, focus on getting well. I also attended the Everyone Home Piloting Leadership Committee meeting and the program there as well, with Councilmember Monroe. And at that meeting, I've been participating quite a bit in discussions on homelessness throughout the county, and realized that it's beginning to change focus and direction, really beyond where my expertise is. So, I would ask that Councilmember Monroe, at least representing our Subcommittee on Homelessness here in Livermore, that since she has the sociology background, and this is sort of the direction where that's going, I'd ask that she represent me on these committees, especially the piloting committee.
As long as you have Councilmember...
Right, Councilmember Carling as well.
I want him to be my backup.
Sure.
He's got the, you know, he does so much of the work on the ground.
Right. But, so, I'm going to be stepping back from that and ask that you two, because this way, I don't have to report back to you. This way, it's first person. There's a tremendous amount of work being done right now. I've been working with the U.S. Conference of Mayors as well. So, I will continue to be a liaison to the Conference of Mayors. But a lot of the work that's being done here in the county, really the boots-on-the-ground work, I think it would be better done with the Subcommittee members. And I'm going to step back. And I would say, it's very rare that I step back from something, but I just recognize that the caliber of the work is, would be so much better accomplished by the members of the committees. So, thank you. Okay, so, the, it was the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which was huge. And I'm not going to try to report on everything, because there's a lot of work going on. The Water Council was probably one of the best Water Council meetings I've ever been to. There's a lot of discussion about affordability of infrastructure. You've got cities of a hundred thousand people that are now operating on, under an eight-hundred-fifty-million-dollar consent decree. A hundred thousand people are now going to have to spend eight-hundred-million dollars in infrastructure. So, how do you determine the affordability of that infrastructure? So, this is something that the EPA is grappling with, many cities are. And there's a different calculation now. It was brought up tonight about the federal poverty limit. There's a new consideration, it's called ALIS. That's Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. And based on that model, for example, forty-two percent of Ohio is ALIS constrained. These are people that are struggling to make it. Forty-two percent of Ohio, this gives you a window into why there's so much divisiveness across the country. Forty-eight percent of California, by ALIS standards, is overburdened. So, it's, one of these came out is that forty percent of the people in, on average, could not come up with four hundred bucks for an emergency and pay it back in any relatively ease, easy timeframe. Fifty-seven percent of the people do not have a thousand dollars in their savings account. So, this ALIS concept, very, very interesting, again, moving ahead with affordability of infrastructure. Yes, we did talk about per- and polyfluoral alkyl and octanoic substances. That's the perfos and perfos. We can detect them in parts per trillion, which is phenomenal. But it is also, the toxicity is unknown for many of the over four thousand species. So, yes, we can detect it. We don't know if it's going to cause us any problem. February seventh, and I'll talk more about the information that I learned at the Conference of Mayors, but it's getting late. February seventh, I was at the Samwell Keane Regional Rail Working Group Committee to, we're working to refinance some certificates of participation. We authorized two grant applications and approved some consultant contracts on capital projects. Today was the Alameda County Transportation Commission Five Eighty Express Lane Committee. The express lane is thirty-three thousand trips per day, fifty percent HOV, forty-five percent single occupancy with a toll paid, up to twenty-five percent differential for the speed limit. And we're getting six million dollars worth of revenue against three million dollars cost in operations. There's discussion to include money in the county transportation plan to fund additional express buses for LAFTA and perhaps even down the six-eighty corridor. And finally, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor and in memory of former Planning Commissioner and well-known downtown businessman Mel Luna, who passed away. So, recognize his contributions to the community. I adjourn in his memory and honor. Thank you very much.